The Wichita Board of Education Meeting of February 12th, 2024 is now called to order. The entire school board is here in present. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight's flag salute will be handled by the Wichita High School East Senior Aerospace, Air Force JROTC. Commander Cadet First Lieutenant Louis Waregu. The Kansas flag is carried by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Daniel Schroeder. And Guard Nat Do and Cadet Georgia Keller. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention. Stand. Arms. Left face. Present. Arms. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Close.
Thank you. Join me with a round of applause for the East High JROTC.
Arms. March.
Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under student success, Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee.
Welcome to the Wichita Board of Education.
Good evening Superintendent Beaufeld and members of the Board of Education. I am Cohen Richardson, Junior at Wichita High School East, Member of Supersac and on the Student Council at East.
I am Lydia Daniel, Senior at Wichita High School East, Member of Supersac and Student Body President at East. We are honored to address you today following the insightful discussion held by the Supersac members regarding the Wichita Public Schools Facility Master Plan. The feedback provided by students offers invaluable insights that should guide your decision-making process moving forward. First and foremost, the students emphasize the critical importance of prioritizing equitable access for all students across the city. Equity must serve as the cornerstone for the Facility Master Plan, ensuring that every student has access to a high-quality education and resources regardless of their background or zip code. One of the topics that was interesting was providing innovative and exciting opportunities to create draw to individual schools and to the district as a whole. If we create innovative and exciting opportunities to schools, kids might find themselves more likely to have an interest in education as a whole.
We highlighted the importance of security and safety within our school facilities. It is imperative that we create learning environments that not only foster academic growth but also prioritize the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Wichita Public Schools needs to prioritize for facility investments varies by school needs. For instance, East may not need more lights but students at Supersac mentioned that Northwest needs some more lights for parking lots after the games. Additionally, schools like East and North may need perimeter fencing but schools like Southeast who reside in a lot of land do not. We urge members of the district to investigate the individual needs and wants of different schools to prioritize. We also discuss the significance of existing programs particularly in STEM, Fine Arts and CTE Pathway programs. In discussion of Wichita Public Schools being the district of choice in our region, new programs such as coding and computers, alternative education models, and aviation and flight pathways reflect the evolving needs and interests of our students in an increasingly complex world. We must remain agile and responsive to these changing dynamics ensuring that our curriculum and facilities align with emerging fields and opportunities. An interesting outlook on the aviation and flight pathway is if we facilitate the ability of students to take courses or receive aviation certification, we can improve Wichita as a whole. Wichita used to be the air capital of the world and by USD 259 implementing an aviation and flight program which is unique to the area, we can bring jobs and money into Wichita. By improving Wichita Public Schools, we are improving Wichita. Another topic we talked on was alternative education models. Some students may need or desire to bring income into their family or the current situation they may find themselves in. While offering night classes, we aid our students' flexible schedule.
We urge Wichita Public Schools to encourage the voices of students and integrate their feedback into the heart of the Facility Master Plan. Let us commit to creating an inclusive, safe, and innovative learning environment that empowers every student to thrive and succeed. Do you have any questions?
Cohen and Knox, raise your hand on that screen.
We need to be able to log in to it.
Okay, go ahead Knox, go ahead.
Yes, just thinking of like youth voice and engagement, what advice would you have for our district leadership team and our school board in even more intentionally centering student voice and your perspectives especially as we move forward with the Facilities Master Plan?
I would say going out into the schools and talking to students. We had Knox actually visit our SUCO group and talk to us about things we wanted to change in the district and in our school and ask us questions about ourselves and I'd advise every board member to do that at every school. I know it's hard to hear students' opinions but if you talk to them first and let them share their opinion, you'll get good advice.
Thank you Knox. Melody.
Okay, am I wired here? Okay, before, I was talking the last meeting and most couldn't hear so I want to make sure that I'm actually audible. So, first of all, thank you for this presentation. Secondly, you mentioned something and your advisement is well-received. I will definitely be attending some SUCO meetings. Those are near and dear and yes, we do need to be able to hear, you know, and then act accordingly. So, the question that I wanted to follow up on is in terms of alternative educational models, what exactly were you suggesting or would you recommend? Do you actually have some that you could share with us?
Well, at Supersac, they included a list of things, something that we would like to see and we kind of ranked them on a scale of one to 10 out of the budget, other things we want to implement. But like at night school, night classes, students can attend schools in the nighttime to work during the day to provide income for the families if they needed to or if that just suits their flexible schedule or we can bring more attention to programs like the Education Imagine Academy, the online school base where they can take online classes, do it at their own will, well, not will is the right word, but on their own time and just really suit their flexible schedule.
So, it sounds like some things that we already have but maybe enhance or make them even more accessible and available?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Cohen and Lydia, we appreciate your attendance tonight. We appreciate your report and we will see you around soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a housekeeping matter real quick. Knox, if you would give me a raised hand on your computer once just to make sure it's working and Hazel, and I don't think there was any problems on this side, was there, Patrick?
No.
Okay, thank you, I think we got it. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under good news, CTE Outstanding Senior Awards.
Good evening, Board Members. I'm Wendy Johnson in Strategic Communications. We have two good news items for you tonight and it's fantastic to see a full house here to celebrate student success as I know you all are committed to. We're going to introduce you to students tonight who were selected as outstanding seniors in our career and technical education pathways and then you are going to get to meet a district full of scholastic award recipients that Mr. Chastain in our Fine Arts Division will introduce you to. So, Mr. Hamblin, who is Executive Director of College Career and Technical Education, will be first to introduce you to the young people that you see coming in.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beaufeld, and members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to share good news this evening. As was mentioned, my name is Tim Hamblin, I'm the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness and for many years, schools across the country, both secondary and post-secondary schools-
One second, and then we'll get the last three or four into the light.
Yeah, come on in. Step forward just a little bit.
And they move backwards.
This is your night.
Come forward.
Okay, go ahead. There you go. Okay, there you go. We can see your faces that way. Much better, much better. So, as I was saying, for several years, secondary and post-secondary schools have taken the month of February to celebrate and raise awareness of CTE, which stands for Career and Technical Education. They also take that opportunity to show how integral and how important that CTE programming can be in the readiness for students as they move on to college and careers. Tonight, we are here to honor and celebrate all of these young people as they have been nominated and selected as CTE Outstanding Seniors in certain pathways. And for those that are also maybe not familiar with the CTE program in Wichita Public Schools, we offer 25 pathways. Many of the pathways are offered at multiple schools. So during the presentation this evening, you may see a pathway mentioned or referenced more than one time and that would be the reason for that. So, at this time, we're going to kick things off. Go Chiefs. I had to get that in there somehow. So, we're going to kick things off here with our first recipient and here to my left is Carly Wimberly. Carly is the Early Childhood Pathway winner at Northwest High School. This year, she is completing her second internship in Child Development Center. In the future, Carly hopes to become part of her family's daycare centers and also explore becoming a vet tech. That way she can utilize her nurturing skills. Next, we have Andrea Aguilara. She is the Fashion Apparel Interior Design, otherwise known as Fade, Pathway Award winner at North High School. At North, Andrea excelled in pathway classes, job shadowing, and the FCC LA Design Competition. She plans to pursue a Fashion Studies degree at K-State to prepare for a career in environmentally conscious and sustainable design. Next, we have Isaac Duran Dijon. Isaac is the Health Pathway winner for West High School. Isaac has been a member of HOSA for two years, was featured in the FRC promotional videos, and earned his CNA and HHA. He plans to major in Health Science at Wichita State to go into nursing or become a physician assistant. Zoe Graber is the Biomed Health Pathway winner from Northeast Magnet High School. In addition to her pathway classes, she also earned her CNA and HHA. Currently Zoe is working as a Life Enrichment Assistant with dementia patients at Show Walter Villa. Zoe plans to become a physician or a surgeon. Alex Hong is the Restaurant and Event Management Pathway winner from East High School. Alex is the lead of East Feast Deli and works in the Landing Coffee Shop. He is a member of the Pro Start Culinary Competition Team. Alex plans to attend the Culinary Institute of America in New York and someday own a restaurant. The Outstanding Senior for Teaching and Training Pathway at South High is Alicia Rodriguez. Alicia has been an Educators Rising Officer, a Conference Presenter, and a Competition winner while at South. Currently, she interns in a ninth grade English class and plans to pursue a secondary education degree to become a USD 259 English teacher. Shaun, get a contract. Along those same lines, we move to Wichita North. Elle Warren is the Outstanding Senior in both the Digital Media and Teaching Pathways. Through her CTE classes, Elle's real personality has come out. She has been active in KSPA, Scholastic Press Competition, and Educators Rising. Elle plans to combine the knowledge and skills she has acquired to become a Journalism or English teacher. So there's another one for you. Unable to join us this evening is Antoine Atakpa. He is the Business Finance Pathway winner at West High School. Antoine is involved in Business Professionals of America and he plans to attend Wichita State University and major in accounting. The Business Management and Entrepreneurship Pathway winner for West High School is Ignacio Enriquez. He has been involved in Business Professionals for America and is a national qualifier. He plans to use his entrepreneurship skills to open a local computer sales and repair business. Also, from West High School, is Aiden Swaminen. Aiden is the Corrections, Security, Law, and Law Enforcement Pathway winner. Aiden plans to get a job working at the courthouse while he goes to college. Although his career plans are unknown at this time, he's hoping that working will help him continue to explore further options. Our Outstanding Senior in the Emergency and Fire Management Pathway is Andrew Beavers. Andrew has been involved in the Fire Pathway at South while being a student at West. Andrew plans to go to college to earn his Associate's Degree in Fire Science so that he can become a firefighter. Cyrus Morris is the East High School Digital Media Audio-Visual Pathway winner. Cyrus enjoys being on camera as well as behind the camera. Being involved in digital media classes has equipped him to have professional conversations with almost anyone. Cyrus plans to pursue a career in music theater. Another East High Blue Ace is Simon Young. I don't believe Simon was able to join us this evening but Simon is the Digital Media Communications Pathway winner. Being in journalism classes in high school has helped Simon realize that shining a light on people's stories is one of the most important aspects of journalism. Simon plans to attend OU to pursue a career in journalism. Jonelli Coronado from North High is the Graphic Design Pathway winner. Jonelli has taken a variety of digital media and graphic design classes. Her CTE classes introduced her to the career she plans to pursue, owning a photography and graphic design business. Joey Baker, also unable to attend this evening, from West High, is the Marketing Pathway winner. Joey is involved in DECA and oversees the operations of the Snack and Shack. With Joey's help, the West High DECA chapter has doubled in membership under his leadership. Joey plans to pursue a career in marketing. Next, I believe, we have from East High School in the Programming and Software Pathway, Ryan Sun. Ryan took advantage of a summer program and an internship through Techtron and took multiple or a variety of CTE classes at East High School. Ryan plans to run cross-country and track at Columbia University in New York, majoring in Information Science. Michaela Goodman from West High is a dual completer in the Digital Media and Engineering Pathways. As a sophomore, she joined the yearbook staff and now sets as the Editor-in-Chief. After graduating high school with a GPA over 3.5, she will continue to use the leadership and communication skills she's gained through her CTE classes. Martine Zamora Barbosa from Northwest High School is the Engineering Pathway winner. Martine also completed the Marketing Pathway and is a member of DECA. Through his CTE courses, he has gained skills in math, engineering, and marketing. Martine would like to pursue a career in civil engineering and possibly open his own business. Next, we have Raven Cantamet from Southeast High School in the Animal Science Pathway. You can tell the goats. We've had goats delivered in the last two or three weeks at Southeast so if you're looking for a goat, let us know. Raven has been an outstanding leader both in the classroom and within the FFA organization. When Raven graduates in May, she will have completed 10 courses in the Animal Science Pathway. Although she plans to pursue a career in avionics, she knows that the skills that she's developed through FFA and the Animal Science Pathway will serve her well. Next, we have Lizette Tovar from North High. She is the Biomed Pathway winner. Lizette is always asking questions about how things could be made better and genuinely desires to be the best she can be. She credits her Biomed classes for pushing her to be her best self. Next, we have Cesar Saludes from East High. He's in the Construction and Design Pathway. Cesar has great communication skills and is well-respected by his classmates. His teacher, Mr. Hazelwood, who I believe is here this evening, said he can always count on Cesar to make sure class projects are not only completed but done with great quality. Cesar says the skills he has learned in the Construction Pathway and Skills USA have prepared him for a career no matter what that might be. Next, we have Kayden Goddard from West High School. He is the Manufacturing Pathway winner. Kayden said CTE manufacturing classes have prepared him for his future and he will be pursuing a career in the automotive manufacturing industry. And last but certainly not least, and we're glad we got her to come in into the light, we have Jennifer Maldonado Diaz from North High School. She is the Outstanding Senior in the Mobile Equipment Maintenance Pathway. Jennifer has the desire to work on cars but she is also an outstanding artist. She has done a remarkable job in combining those two skills within the automotive pathway. Jennifer plans to pursue a career in the automotive industry. As I wrap up, I would like to mention one more thing and I'm very proud of this and it sets our CTE program apart from others. In the CTE world, one of the biggest emphasis or things that we focus on is diversity within the pathways. This is obviously, it's monitored by both the state and federal agencies. The most common measure for this is the number of what we refer to as non-traditional students in the pathways. Historically, data shows that there are certain career fields that have been dominated by one sex, gender, or race. Nursing, for example, predominantly been dominated by females over the history. Automotive, agriculture, some of those more males. You have seen here tonight that we have these fine young people that are non-traditional. They're venturing into fields that have not necessarily been welcoming or open to students like themselves. So I'm incredibly proud of those folks that are doing that. I'm also proud of our staff for encouraging the students to explore. Whatever you want to do, you can do it. So, with that, I would like to thank you once again for this opportunity to showcase some of the finest that we have and if you would please, let's give them all a round of applause.
And all of them have the potential to become a teacher. Wendy, the second good news item?
Yes, sir. I suspect that Mr. Hudspeth is somewhere waiting to encounter these young folks as they walk out the door. We'll look forward to bringing them back to introduce you soon to them as they are in our classrooms. So, you get to meet another amazing group of young people. These young people are our Scholastic Art Award winners who inspire me every year when we get to see their great work and we are honored to introduce you to another great group of students and you all make sure that as you come forward, step out from under the overhang so we can see your wonderful faces and as you're doing that, it's my honor to invite Shaun Chastain forward to introduce you to these young people.
Welcome Shaun.
Thank you. Thank you Wendy. Good evening, everyone. Before proceeding, I just want to make sure any student or teacher representing tonight's Scholastic Awards, if you haven't already, to please join us down front. I also want to invite everyone to view our district's award-winning artwork on the screens. I also want to thank Marcia Skirfield, WPS Visual Arts Curriculum Specialist, for joining me and for also coordinating this beautiful slideshow. Thank you also to the WPS Visual Arts faculty who submitted these digital images and especially to those in attendance tonight. From Allison Middle School, Teacher Jennifer Lee from East High, Instructor Molly Williams from Heights High School, Instructor Dylan Seeny from North High, Nikki Baird, Olivia Arrozco, and Tina Thomas, and from Northeast Magnet, Bruce Van Osgill, Meredith Ragheganon, and Joshua Ayers. And from Northwest, we have Student/Teacher Jennifer Lalaman. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the oldest and most prestigious recognition program for creative teenagers in the United States. Each work is reviewed by a panel of arts professionals for originality, technical skill, and an emergence of professional vision and voice. This year, 2,028 individual submissions were submitted for the Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Awards. Of these 2,028 submissions, 611 student works were selected for the show. Of those 611 works selected, here's the number, over 275 entries were from the Wichita Public Our award-winning work represents 163 student artists from one of our seventh graders through our high school seniors. These student artists were guided by 27 visual arts instructors representing 10 WPS secondary schools and for the third year in a row, all of our WPS high schools were represented along with two middle schools. This year's district-winning categories included Honorable Mention, Silver Key, Gold Key, and American Vision nominees. So, percentage-wise, is everyone ready for this? An unprecedented 45% of the 70-county Eastern Scholastic Award winners are from the Wichita While we have an upfront look at these award-winning students and faculty, we also would like to recognize any parents and administrators of these students that are with us tonight in the audience. Parents, administrators, family members, I would invite you to stand as we give thanks for your continued support of these talented students. Parents, family members, please stand. Thank you for being here. And finally, I want to recognize and thank these student artists for joining us tonight. Again, less than one-third of all submissions were chosen for this year's exhibition so award winners, please know that we are all WPS proud of each and every one of you. From Allison Middle School, we have Kayden Arona Martinez. We also have Lily Ramos. From East High School, we have Colin Barrows and Khalil Kates. From Heights High School, I'll go there next, Shadden Jaredat. If I've said your name so far, go ahead and wave at the group so they know where you're at. From North High, we have Adam Bosworth, Lily Cardenas, Sierra Hagan, Fabian Hernandez, Lola Pando Ledezma, William Vegas Medina, Ava Williams, and Lexi Zubia Contreras. From Northeast Magnet, we have Brianna Alvarado, Gillian Hunt, Morgan Lambert, Kiara Sibley, Kamora Wise, and I believe that that's all the artists that came today. So, how about another round for our student artists that are with us this evening? Thank you again to these students, teachers, administrators, and family members for being here tonight. And again, a special appreciation to Strategic Communications for giving each of these students a wonderful certificate of recognition. And finally, many thanks to the Board and District Leadership for once again supporting the Wichita Public Schools excellent representation at this year's Scholastic Art Awards. If anyone here would like to see more, you can view the exhibition at Mark Arts, 1307 North Rock Road until March 23rd where the closing ceremony will be giving out numerous college scholarships. Last year, Scholastics awarded $700,000 in college scholarships so we know that we'll have many of our scholarship offerings coming to our students. But for now, how about one final round of applause for all of our students, teachers, administrators for being here tonight. Congratulations.
Again, that exhibit is going to be on display until March 23rd at Mark's Art, 1307 North Rock Road. It's always a wonderful show to look at.
Next item, public communications.
We have two speakers tonight. You will have three minutes with the timer on the corner of the screen in front of you. And the policy is that speakers comment at a meeting will not exceed three minutes, will be limited to the registered topic, and will not include personnel matters concerning district employees or other matters that would violate the privacy of students. Our first speaker tonight is Sarah Graves. No rush. Safety first. We're going to pass out your material here first. Give Patrick time to get back to his clerk before he starts his time. Thank you, Sarah. Anytime. Go ahead.
Members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Graves. My children, biological and foster, past, present, and future, attend Krista McCallum Academy. I'm here to discuss the discontinuation of the Avid program at Krista McCallum and the effects it will have on our school's community, and specifically, our students with higher needs. I would like to remind you of the promises Wichita Public Schools has made to our students. Our vision is to inspire each student to thrive and become future-ready. Our shared beliefs include that resources are allocated equitably and efficiently, and every student is entitled to equitable opportunities, resources, and services. The central theme of equity is further supported by the mission statement of the Equity, Diversity, and Accountability Department. Wichita Public Schools will provide equitable access with the intention of closing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, belonging gaps, and graduation gaps, particularly for student groups with the greatest academic and behavioral needs. As you can tell, equity is extremely important to me and my family, and Wichita Public Schools themselves have defined equity as far more than just financial need. We are a community that is seeking equity in all facets of student life. I have parented neurodiverse students, those with serious health conditions, trauma, mental health concerns, learning disorders, physical disabilities, behavioral issues, and members of the LGBT community, and those that suffer just from general belonging gaps in general. On paper, Avid is defined as a future readiness program that focuses on the academic support, skill development, and fostering a college-going culture. In practice, it's a lot more than that. It is tutoring for those that have achievement gaps. It is the peer accountability necessary for those facing a graduation gap, and is the hope of a college education for those with opportunity gaps. And most importantly, at CMA, it is a family for those with belonging gaps. By discontinuing the Avid program from Krista McCallum Academy, I believe that Wichita Public Schools is not prioritizing the promises that we have made to our students, my children. To the best of my knowledge, CMA students with higher needs no longer have a proactive and targeted program to thrive and become future-ready. Over time, our students will lose the Avid community that we fought so hard to build, and will rely primarily on 504s and IEPs, which tend to be more reactionary. I realize that I'm asking for financial support at a really difficult time for Wichita Public Schools. I'm really just asking you to please look at the research, please objectively compare all of the programs, and choose to fund and develop the programs that best serve our students. I believe that Avid at Krista McCallum Academy is one of those programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next speaker is Jerry Hicks. And you can start anytime.
Okay. My name is Jerry Hicks. I am the proud parent of a USD 259 graduate from Southeast High School last year. I am here on behalf of the Avid program, as is Sarah. When I go to the Wichita USD 259 website, it says the goal is every student future-ready. I am concerned, like many others, that we are reducing a program with a proven success rate. When we look at the national statistics for Avid, 94% of those who complete the program also complete four-year college entrance requirements. We know that 90% who apply are accepted for four-year college programs, and 84% of those who enroll the first year of college that have completed an Avid program persist into the second year and beyond. When we look at peer groups and first-generation low-income Avid college students, 42% complete a four-year college program that have been through Avid. That's a startling number, versus 11% of their peers who complete that have not been through an Avid program. I've seen firsthand success with Avid. My son went through the Avid program also at CMA. He was a participant in the Avid program at Southeast. My son tutors Avid at CMA this year and also at Mayberry. And my son's comments are pretty telling. He says what he sees and what he saw in the program is it turns C and D students into A and B students. He says it improves thinking, study skills, communication, improves group interaction and team building, and it promotes self-confidence, which is huge for the kids in middle school and high school. I know we've got tough times. I know we have tough budget concerns for all of you to deal with. It's near infinite need and very finite resources. I am certainly sympathetic to that. But I have to ask, when we have a program such as Avid that contributes to the USD 259 goal is for every student future-ready, when it makes such a positive contribution, it's very difficult for us in the parenting area that work with the schools to see Avid restricted. And from my perspective, it seems like it's the one thing that we should be trying to increase rather than decrease. The money, I know, is tight, but for what it returns, I challenge you to find other programs that help students that have the success rate that Avid has. Okay? I'm very respectful here, but it's a very hard pill to swallow. When I saw my son prosper with this program and grow and become a student at WSU and be successful, it's a very challenging environment for everybody. So I'd ask respectfully that you consider what your decisions are and where your funds are, and put the priority with Avid so we don't reduce the program, but maintain or, if possible, grow it. Let's thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jerry. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Finance, Budget Report.
Kelly, do you want to introduce the topic?
Yes, thank you, Stan. President Reiser. In January, we had a discussion about our budget outlook for fiscal year '25, and we concluded that discussion with a request from the board to staff to come back with a recommendation for school closures for August of '24. Thank you, Patrick. So, I've invited the source of all wisdom in the school district, Susan Willis, to present. She does have support behind her, so as we get, she's going to lead the main part of the presentation, and then we get to Q and A if we have other specialized questions that come up. The team is here to respond. So I will pass it off to Susan.
Good evening, President Reiser, Superintendent Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight our update for the fiscal year '25 budgeting process, which includes walking through Phase 2, which is our school closing recommendation. I would beg the board's indulgence just a little bit tonight as we start with a recap of what we presented at our January meeting. For those that may not have seen that presentation or may not have been fully engaged at that point, we want to walk back through some of that rationale of what led us to make that recommendation before we get into the recommendation itself. But to start tonight, I actually want to start with some information just about the district in general. We are the largest district in Kansas. We educate 47,174 students as of our official count date. We are the third-largest employer in south-central Kansas. Wichita Public Schools has an impact on the local community, both in terms of our footprint and in terms of our economic impact to our community. We are richly diverse. We are, students come from 97 different countries of birth. We have 95 total buildings, 10 million interior square feet of space to maintain. That includes elementary sites, middle, K8s, high schools, special schools, and five support centers. And as we've shared in the past, our average age of our buildings are 60-plus years old. We have various points of pride that I wanted to share tonight, but one of the biggest points of pride that we wanted to talk a little bit about as we embark upon what is going to be some very difficult conversations is that we are a WPS proud family. We are a family by choice, whether that's our students choosing to come to attend Wichita Public Schools, or we may be a family by blood, generational often, where our students and their parents and their grandparents attended a particular school, or our staff who may have an aunt, or a mother, or a child that works for us. We are proud as a district, but we are also very proud as individual schools. And I think as we talk a lot about data tonight, I don't want us to lose sight that there's a lot of emotional pieces that go with school closing. This is very difficult for the system. It's extremely difficult for those individuals being impacted by even the proposal of closing schools. It's not something we have done lightly, and we've kept that in the forefront of our thought process, that this does impact people, even though the data certainly leads you to certain sorts of conclusions, that this is about people and their emotional well-being and their response to our proposal tonight. On the right side, you can see some of the, just a few of the points of pride of the various programs that the district has. You heard two of the programs in Good News, our CTE programs and our Fine Arts. In addition to the visual arts, 30,000-plus students participate in our music programs. It's a large area of interest. You can see athletics, our JROTC, our esports. The list goes on and on. All of those programs are fueled by resources. And the three primary resources that keep the engine of the district rolling are people, money, and facilities. And we use the visual of the three-legged stool because a shortfall in any one of these areas causes the stool to be unstable. A large shortfall in any one of these areas can cause the stool to collapse. So each one is integral to our financial and operational well-being, but certainly, I think we would agree, people are our greatest resource. People make the difference in students' lives. We are going to talk a lot about people tonight: staffing, student needs. It is the critical component that makes the district what it is. And so, we do have people challenges. Let's start first with the student side of our budget, and that has to do with our enrollment decline. We've talked a lot about enrollment decline really since '17, '18, when we first started to notice we had kind of reached a plateau and were starting to come down slightly. Since the 2016-17 year, you can see we have declined by 8.4%. Now, we are looking at full-time equivalents, that's the acronym, FTE. We don't get to count headcount for funding purposes. So for the purposes of this chart, we are looking at full-time equivalents. Not every student that attends Wichita Public Schools attends full-time. Pre-K is a good example. We have halftime pre-K programs. We get funded at half of the base state aid for pre-K. We have other students that may only come in for certain services or certain classes, and we get a portion of the funding for those students. So in any given year, compared to our headcount, our FTE is typically running 2,000 to 3,000 FTE lower than headcount, which is why the numbers don't necessarily align to the 47,000 number I quoted earlier, which was headcount. But we are at an 8.4% decline through this year audited. That includes a significant drop in the '21-'22 school year. This was following COVID, that the students who had, when we had closed, did not return that fall, and then did not return the fall after that. That had a budgetary impact in fiscal year '23. And you see now on this chart, what I've done is I've actually taken it out a couple years based on our demographic studies, which continues to show the decline. We've looked at both the MGT study and the study that RSP did in 2018. Both had varying degrees of decline, but both were aligned in that the enrollment situation for Wichita Public Schools will continue in a slight decline for at least the next 10-plus years. So that, those indicators of continuing decline will have a direct impact on the amount of revenues coming into the system. Additionally, on the staffing side, we've had significant staffing challenges, which we've talked to the board about since 2021. We currently have 270-plus individual position vacancies and an additional 51 positions that are holding some of these decisions that we are going to be making here in the next month. We typically have 400 teaching positions turnover each year, and close to 700 overall positions turn each year, typically in the summer when we have retirements. Additionally, we have 191 subs, this was data as of January 19th, that were filling vacancies. And the issue we have with subs filling vacancies is that those subs are not available to cover absences. And on that January 19th, when we pulled this data, we had 850 absences and vacancies, 703 of those needed fulfilled. We filled 457 for a fill rate of 65%. Had the subs in vacancies been available to cover absences, our fill rate would have been 89%. And that's the situation our schools are dealing with every day of trying to get enough staff in buildings to fill classrooms. It is, it's a real challenge. We hear this time and time again from administrators, that this is a hardship. We've talked about facilities challenges. We actually started talking to the board about facilities challenges in 2018 when we did our, kind of our first data dive into deferred maintenance and the pressures on capital outlay. Most recently, we've had a presentation from the group that's doing the work on the Facilities Master Plan, and they shared in December that the district has capacity for 63,000 students. And with even a headcount of 47,000, that we have a lot of underutilized space, especially in elementary and middle schools. The scope, the physical age, the number of system replacement throughout all our buildings is significant. In December, they shared it would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, for us to ever catch up with this deep of a deferred maintenance number. And really, at this point, even just keeping up with normal repairs and maintenance with the number of buildings that we have is a challenge. And as we put all of those pieces together, what's happening is we're spreading our resources way too thin so that we're losing impact. I believe I used the analogy of providing the board a pie, right? A single pie, everyone gets a piece, and everyone feels fairly satisfied. You might, you might want another piece, but you don't need another piece of pie. If I take that same pie and divide it over everyone behind me, maybe people get a bite of pie. They don't feel satisfied, that isn't enough to fulfill the dessert need in that scenario. But in this case, when it's funds, that's what it somewhat feels like for our schools. When we spread the pie of district finance over all of the buildings we're trying to support, it just feels like we're not providing enough support to those buildings. And really, at this point, we can't staff them. And you saw that with some of the data we presented on the staffing side. Additionally, and we've been talking about the end of federal funding since it began in 2020, but we are approaching the end of historic one-time money coming into the school district in the form of pandemic relief funding. We were receiving from the federal government more than $270 million to help students recover from the impacts of COVID-19, from being out of school. to help students recover from the impacts of COVID-nineteen, from being out of school, from being remote, from working through those traumas. That work is still ongoing. We have done, I think, a remarkable job spending the majority of that money on one-time initiatives. But we did spend forty million dollars on ongoing expenditures. We spent twenty million dollars to support the budget and not make significant cuts. And we shared with both, we shared with the board that that's what we were doing. We shared with our unions that's what we were doing. And we shared with our building leadership that that's what we were doing. We've had the ESER, that's the Federal Pandemic Relief Funding. We've shared the concept of the ESER cliff almost from the get-go. That if we use one-time dollars to support ongoing initiatives in the district, at some point when that one-time money is gone, replacement dollars either have to be found or cuts have to be made. And we are approaching the end of federal pandemic relief funding. We will be finished with that spending by June thirtieth. Additionally, we've spent twenty million dollars of federal pandemic relief funding to hire particular support staff primarily around child study team, behavior, and additional para-support for classrooms. And you'll see in some of our surveys, over and over and over again, the feedback has been, we need these positions, we need them to continue. Don't cut the child study teams, don't cut the additional para-support, don't cut the behavior programs. There is still a large need for all of that spending. So when that feedback was coming back in, then we're kind of faced with a choice of do we ignore the feedback, understanding that those people are critical to what's happening in the lives and well-being of our students? Or do we cut something that people are telling us they desperately need? So all of those components, all kind of working together, have led us to a budgetary shortfall for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year of forty-two million dollars. Now, that is a significant number. I want to, I don't typically do this, but I'm going to do this tonight because there's been a lot of misinformation as that number became more widely known. I think, and I'll just start first with the concept that the district has never had sixty-three thousand students. It has, I had to go searching for the data, but in nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy, seventy-one, the district headcount was sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven students. And we got, we actually found this in some archives in strategic communications. But not wanting that to be our sole source of data, I went, I went on a search for other, other information that was outside of the district. And I found a report filed with the federal government. It was a, it was a Title I, ten-year, how was Title I successful in Wichita Public Schools from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen seventy-five? And in nineteen sixty-five, the report indicated that our enrollment exceeded seventy-two thousand students, or exceeded seventy thousand students. And then in seventy-six, it had dropped to fifty-two thousand students. So I felt pretty confident that our number of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven per our archives was an accurate number. We have also heard several times, the district must have misused funds in order to have a forty-two million dollar deficit. And we will argue time and time again, absolutely not. Choices have been made through the process based on the sets of circumstances in front of us at a particular point in time. When we used pandemic relief funds rather than make significant cuts, we have to remember what was going on during those years where we had a number of staff battling their own illnesses and being absent and being, having to be out for certain periods of time. We were, had historically high inflation. And to not give raises at a time where historically high inflation was occurring would have been a very difficult choice for the board to make. And we chose not to, not to do anything about the twenty-six hundred student loss other than to try to slowly take, through attrition, adjust for the number of teachers we needed. But again, that really didn't address that core loss of a significant amount of students, primarily in the elementary, but obviously moving through the system now. We chose to use that federal money to keep the services intact for as long as possible. So really, what we've done is taking a decision that could have really been talked about in the eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, easily the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two school years, and said, we've got one-time money, a lot of one-time money, let's, let's see if anything changes. Let's make sure the demographic studies are accurate. And we have continued to see the trends that we anticipated seeing. That's the information we wanted to see while we had historic one-time federal funding in order to do that. And that's what we did. You might not agree with the choices, but it was not a misuse of funding. All of those were allowable uses within the federal guidelines. We checked, we double-checked, we triple-checked to make sure that we were in good shape to do that. Additionally, the district, I've heard this a few times, the district must not have been taking care of its buildings. And we, we respond patently false. In fact, I think our facilities and our custodial groups take remarkably good care of our buildings. You walk into any single one of them and they look phenomenal, considering that the average age of them is over sixty years old in many cases. And in other cases, it's a hundred-plus years old. So again, you do not get that impression when you walk into our buildings. But that doesn't mean that the systems themselves, whether it's HVAC or windows or roofs, shouldn't be replaced based on an end-of-useful-life formula. And that's what deferred maintenance is, is looking at all of those systems and saying their useful life should be about twenty years, twenty-five years in some cases, fifteen in others. And when should we start a replacement plan? And what we've had to do, because of the number of buildings and the number of systems, is we've had to kind of stretch, stretch those useful lives out probably well past when they should be replaced, but keep them in operation through the remarkable efforts of our facilities folks. Every school district in the country deals with deferred maintenance. You can look up any report online and you will see that the infrastructure problems of public schools is a problem nationwide. Because no one has enough money to deal with deferred maintenance issues. In our case, age of buildings, number of buildings, inflation, right? When's, if you put in an HVAC system in your home ten to fifteen years ago, you were going to pay a lot more if you put that same system in today. Multiply that times ten or a hundred and you get what the district is dealing with on every single system that we put into place. And then the majority of this board was not in place, but in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, in order to avoid other budget cuts, the district moved a lot of technology expenses into capital outlay in the, about ten or eleven million dollars' worth. And so capital outlay has been trying to manage between facilities and tech ever since. And tech has done nothing but grown. So you can see that it isn't that we haven't taken care of what we needed to take care of, but the spending footprint of the district is evolving, just like it is for every other business out there. Higher tech spend, and we're trying then to manage a number of buildings with increasing dollars, but not increasing at the same rate as inflation and the aging out of systems. The district has plenty of money. We hear this a lot. And we, we agree that the district has cash balances that can be used. We shared that with the board in January, that we had an intention of utilizing some cash balances to help get through this particular forty-two million dollar shortfall because it is a very large number, significantly larger than the last major budget shortfall we had, which was twenty-two million. And at that time, we, we went through four phases, which included a calendar change. So yes, end-of-year cash, cash balances will be part of our solution. But just like the federal pandemic relief funding, using cash to balance the budget is a one-time solution which delays decision-making. So we caution the board not to want to use all of your cash reserves to simply wait a year to be in the same place we're at today. Additionally, when we look at our cash balances, and we file with the state, with, with the state of Kansas as part of our budgetary submission, an unencumbered cash report annually. That's a point in time, right? It changes every month. Our funds do not come in equally month over month. We have ebbs and flows, some months are very high, some months are very low. But there are a number of funds that we cannot spend for operations. There are, in our unencumbered cash balance report, there's seventy-three million dollars in bond and interest. It is targeted to bond payments because we owe over two hundred million dollars in bond payments. We're not allowed to spend that seventy-three million dollars on operations. It has to be for bond payments. We have sixty million and change in the health plan reserve, which also includes our workers' comp and our property casualty. Our health expenses are running six million dollars a month. So we don't want to pull out of reserves for the health plan when you're paying six million dollars a month in claims. And under, we all know that your health claims do not come in the day after you go to the doctor. It's two months or three months or six months later. So we have got to be constantly evaluating the health plan to make sure it is healthy enough to pay the claims of our employees. So there are a number of cash balances that we will be looking at, but we will not be looking at our restricted funds to help us out of this situation. And then finally, why does this seem to be happening so fast? The budgetary shortfall is driving the timeline. There is no getting around that we are trying to solve a problem, a forty-two million dollar budgetary shortfall problem. And that is why we're moving what, in what seems to be a relatively fast pace through, through this process of decision-making. We have to do that because a balanced budget is required by state law. You cannot operate your school in a deficit position. But again, we will go back to the board has received regular updates on almost all of these topics for a number of years. Again, two thousand eighteen for capital outlay. We've had ESER pandemic relief reports frequently for the last few years. We've shared staffing challenges on multiple occasions. The, the, the argument about transparency, which I respect, particularly because school finance is not the easiest topic to, for someone that's just coming in to fully understand all the moving parts. But we are one of the most audited entities that, as far as public, public money is concerned. We are audit, our federal funds are audited annually. We have a financial audit. KSDE comes in and audits our student counts. We are randomly picked by legislative post-audit for almost every particular topic out there. We are, our books are scrutinized. Our checkbook is online. You can see every dollar that's going out of our system. You can look up everyone's salary online and make, and see what everyone makes. We are extremely transparent on almost every aspect of our financial situation. We, the board receives a monthly finance report specifically focused on the general and supplemental general fund. That's available online. Our budget document has this year's budget plus two years of historical spend data and has various charts and pictures, if you're more of a visual learner, to walk through anything you'd like to know about the particular finances of the district. It is a large animal. We understand that it can be very overwhelming to kind of walk through all of those pieces of documentation. But we have, I think we've done a good job of leading the board. We've, we've talked to our principals. We share information with our unions every year through the negotiation process of our financial situation. So let's talk, let's go back to feedback. Multiple ESER surveys had gone out because it's required under the federal guidelines for pandemic relief. Our Safe and Civil School surveys were used, various employment engagement surveys, superintendent search, and all of that feedback was taken into account. Strategic plan input opportunities, those were both in-person and through written response. The most recent was the facilities master planning survey that went out. And we did have looked, we have looked at some of that early survey data coming back. And then our, we did an entire exercise with our employee base to do, practice some restorative, some of our restorative practices, techniques, to get some feedback on what's working well in school budgets, what were their concerns as we moved into potential budget cuts? And we got a tremendous amount of really actionable feedback from that process. That feedback has driven priorities. Keep mental health, keep child study team supports, maintain para-support. Please, we heard that over and over again, please maintain jobs. But reasonable class sizes and caseloads were of a concern. And so a lot of what you'll see coming up is taking a lot of those pieces and embedding them into the decision-making process. Protect wages, fill classroom vacancies with certified staff. Student and family engagement opportunities, don't cut those because that's what, that's what keeps those relationships with the school tied together so that the student, the staff, the school, the parents are all working in conjunction. That's where the, the magic can happen is when you have all of those pieces really working well together. Don't cut those and be transparent in the process. So we started as, and the survey, survey data coming from staff also wanted to make sure we were focused on administrative cuts first. That's where we started. We sent out program budget, program budgets about two weeks ago now. We have all our administrative program budgets performing both a five-percent estimated, estimated cut and a ten-percent estimated cut. So they are doing proposals for both because we had indicated that five percent was a minimum. We reassigned the ESER-supported non-school positions to other budgeted positions. So essentially, we were cutting anything that isn't school-related that we put in with one-time money. We have recaptured to date through attrition nine attendant, non-attendant center-type positions. So this runs the range from the budget office, because I like to walk the walk, the, a couple in facilities, in supply, in, in HR, in the magnet office, a few other places. So we have worked through that attrition. We will do more of that. That is not an end, that is not a final number. And then ESER-supported initiatives, really those non-FTE software-type purchases that were made with ESER will come to an end, or they will have to be absorbed into a budget, and something else within that budget would have to be cut. And I think I said magnet, I think that's the Equity and Diversity Office, actually. So apologize for that. We then looked at some school reductions that we could make that didn't impact people, particularly that were ESER strategies, so pandemic relief strategies. If there was a vacancy from a pandemic relief initiative, we cut those. We are analyzing and implementing some para-FTE changes as attrition occurs. So it's a slower rollback of some of those special ed in particular additions where it should not be felt tremendously in-your-face if we turned around and cut all those hours right away. We've heard about the ABID changes. We reassigned any non-child study team and non-behavior ESER positions to other budgeted positions. That's the, that's the action that we will be taking. Again, wanting to focus on what our, our staff are telling us, which is focus on the behavior and the child study team support. And we paused an administrative intern program. That work brought us to a nine-million-dollar reduction. So after this phase-one work, we were at a thirty-three, we're at a thirty-three million dollar shortfall. So we've made progress, we have a ways to go. When we brought the suggestion to the board, the suggestion of potentially exploring the concept of closing a building, there were pros and cons. And I, as I looked back through my slides, I see I'm rather redundant on this topic, so, but I think it's important, so I'll probably hit it two or three times. The building closure pros, obviously, we reduce that deferred maintenance obligation. The people can be moved into vacancies, and the people piece of this work will be critically important. Any staff at a closed building are so important to the long-term viability and success of success of the district. They're valued. We, we have, we will do everything possible to find a spot that they want, have, that they have voice if we move to the, to the next step of this proposed, um, school closure action. It focuses resources in the remaining buildings, so we hopefully will be coming more and more efficient through the process by better utilizing our buildings, focusing resources on fewer, um, physical spaces, and we will become more efficient. And it does prioritize people per the feedback we received. Obviously, the con is the impact that people who have deep emotional ties to a building are going to experience and what can be perceived as a quick implementation timeline. Because as, as the board runs through the steps it has to run through in order to consider this alternative, um, we really won't get on the, if, if the board votes in March that we're a go, there's a pretty short timeline between March and the end of the school year for things to occur. So it will feel very fast once we get past a final decision. And that is, that's a con. I mean, we just have to acknowledge that things moving that quickly change can be difficult for, for our staff and our families. Um, that's a con. The timing, as far as not having that master plan yet, in the perfect world, that's what we would be doing is this all would be part of a larger plan, um, related to where the district's heading long-term, um, what we want out of our schools, the appropriate size of, that school should be, all of those conversations we would be having and making decisions accordingly. It's the forty-two million dollar shortfall that's causing us to move to a, a short-term solution to a budgetary and staffing issue. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about what long-term looks like, but this is, this is not the long-term plan. Um, and there will have to be some targeted boundary changes. The alternative presented to the board in January was if we don't look at the closing as an option, we'll have to start looking at staffing and reducing the number of staff that we have. Um, that's where the, the bulk of the dollars get spent. When you're a district and you're spending seventy-five percent of your budget on people, when you need to reduce budget, that's typically where you look for sizable savings. We can look at individual programs. We can look at individual initiatives. We save a little bit with each one, but we don't save a lot. It's the people costs that where things really add up fast. And the only pro we could come up with on the staff cut side was it would defer a closing building discussion, which again, it would not eliminate it. It would just defer it. And it potentially makes the staffing problem worse. Um, and that change would impact every building through the system. And we really want to try to minimize the overall impact with this immediate action that we're suggesting. So as we looked at what solution, again, solves the operational and financial challenges that the district's facing, um, the enrollment loss, right? That, that we will continue, all the data tells us that there is no change in that trend in the foreseeable future. The inability to staff with every classroom with a certified teacher and really all other positions too. This isn't limited to teachers. And that again, is not unique to Wichita Public Schools or schools in general. You talk to anyone in Wichita about what their primary issue is, it's staffing. So we are no different than anyone else in those struggles. The one-point-two billion dollars of deferred maintenance is a challenge, right? And so is the forty million dollar one-time money that's sitting in our budget. And really so is the underutilization of buildings from an efficiency perspective. If, if you're looking at the, the, the taxpayer dollar, um, and how well we are spending and being responsible for those dollars in our system, underutilizing the, the physical spaces could be perceived as an issue, right? So what solution touches each one of those issues? That's why we brought that recommendation of closing schools because not only does it solve some immediate financial needs, but it hits every single one of the areas, right? Fills vacancies, prioritizes people, starts reducing that backlog, focuses resources, reduces expenditures to balance the budget, better utilizes the remaining buildings, right sizes for enrollment loss. That's why it's been, that's why we brought that suggestion to the board and we asked for the opportunity to explore it. Again, this work aligns, but is not the long-term facilities master planning process. That long-term process envisions really what our community wants schools to be. It, it engages and will engage stakeholders more fully in various ways, whether it's through mailers or meetings, um, a lot more of what do we want our schools to look like? What do we want, um, as far as class sizes, school sizes, all of those, all of those conversation points? That's all work that will be happening and is important work. As we heard our students say, they want to be involved in that work. Um, so it is really kind of setting that work as a goal, but does, that doesn't help us with our immediate problem. Um, so we'll go ahead and keep moving. Okay. So that brings us to the framework that we've kind of been utilizing to, to start putting our arms around a proposal. And we had to consider each school's data point in, in context. So we started with, using kind of this circle diagram, we started with the individual school conditions and utilization. And that's the data that we put out online that everyone's kind of been looking at and trying to guess which direction we might go. But that's looking at data in a vacuum and doesn't take into account any of the ripple effect of, of how, if we make a decision on a particular building, what happens to students, what happens to staff? So it's important in and of itself to look at the individual school condition and its utilization rate. Absolutely. And we did. But it's also important to look at the surrounding area schools that would be welcoming those students, to look at what's their utilization look like, what's their staffing look like? Will we have to add a lot of staff to that building to keep class sizes manageable for staff? If the answer was yes, we'll have to add a lot of staff, we had to look at other alternatives. Because again, remember, we're trying to solve two issues, which is getting staff into seats, classroom teacher in every classroom, and we're trying to save some dollars, not the full thirty-three million, right? A portion. And then from that, well then we looked at the larger impact to the district as a whole. So it was much broader, much more in-depth, too. Broader and in-depth, that's a little bit maybe in contrast, but the whole picture had to be looked at. You have to anticipate two, three, or four moves in order to really make those judgment of whether that option makes sense. After we set that framework, that that was what, that was the guiding framework, then we looked at what, what kind of guard grails should influence the decisions. And what we heard from the board in January was we didn't want layoffs. We wanted employees to have a position with Wichita Public Schools. That was critically important. And again, it's definitely important as we look to try to fill vacancies. We need our people. We absolutely need our people. We wanted to make choices that were least disruptive to the system, minimizing boundary changes, minimizing feeder pattern changes. So where a student was set to go to a particular middle school, particular high school, and we wanted to keep that flow generally intact, particularly the high school. We wanted to move students where there would be capacity nearby, so not across town, but nearby, without adding significant numbers of new staff. If we're adding staff to buildings, we're not saving those dollars. Now, we will add some, right? It's not, it's not a perfect one-to-one. We'll add some, but we needed to minimize that in order to try to hit our savings targets. And in this case, our savings goal was sixteen million dollars. That's what we're after. What we did not consider as part of phase two is any disposition of vacated buildings. That's going to be part of the master planning process, whether that's, we keep them, whether we sell them, whether we repurpose them, whatever conversations that, that the community and the board and all the different stakeholders end up having was not part of our work in phase two. Any district-wide boundary change or feeder pattern change, as we previously said, we steered clear away from anything that would have that kind of impact. And any facility improvement plans, major facility improvement plans for schools was not considered. Um, in fact, what was considered is if we had to make major renovations in order for a program or school, staff, students to move, we backed off and said we need to look at a different, a different set of alternatives. So the buildings that were not reviewed for phase two, we did not look at high schools. High schools are too big. Um, and there's way too many disruptions if you start to try to move a high, high school. And really, they don't, none of them have capacity to take other students of any significance. And high schools is not where we've been dropping enrollment. It's middle and elementary. We've actually grown some high school enrollment, enrollment, um, in the last couple of years. Not a lot, but we've definitely stayed very stable at high school. We didn't look at special schools because students are already placed there through an, an individual education process, right? That is, is not, it's not a, an enrollment base. It's not a boundary thing. We look at the programs. We place students where their IEP needs dictate. Um, and most of the time, a building would need too many modifications to accept, um, special school within their regular school building. So we just, that's not part of this work. If we need to look at special schools, we'll look that, at that through facilities master planning. We didn't look at K eights either. There's only three. Um, as a group, they are newer buildings and they have a higher utilization than other groups. So we said we're just, that's a different nuance. We're not going to look at K eights. And we did not look at administrative centers, um, specifically because number one, the cost to adapt, because this would be primarily items coming into the administrative building at AMAC. We have a lot of space, but they're empty classroom spaces. So they would need network drops and electric, more electric outlets and cubes and different things. And we just said that, that facilities piece, we weren't ready to, to kind of go down that path. Facilities master planning, absolutely, should be part of the conversation. But as far as kind of that short-term, we did not want facilities to have to be going in and doing that work and on a very tight timeline. Additionally, unless we're eliminating whole departments, lifting and shifting employees to a new space saves us a little money, but doesn't save us a lot of money. So those are conversations that we certainly can have longer term, but as far as this particular work, we left that for master planning. So that leaves us really looking at elementary and middle school options. And you've seen these facts, we'll cover them again. Twenty-four out of fifty-four of our elementary sites are under three-hundred-and-fifty students. Twelve sites have less than three hundred. Six of the three hun, six sites that are under three, three hundred have less than sixty percent utilization rates. Fourteen of the fifty-four sites have over a point-seven FCI. There were a number of options within that realm of data that could have been deemed viable, right? Just on the surface of individual school facts, you could have looked at any of the top third on the FCI list or any in the top third of the utilization and, and picked any one of those and it would have made sense. Same on the middle school sites. Pure facts, right? Eleven of fifteen sites under six-hundred-and-fifty students, eight sites under five-hundred-and-seventy-five students. Only one middle school exceeds eighty percent utilization. The average as a group was sixty-two percent. And seven of fifteen sites are over point-seven and several of them are close in that point-five to point-seven range. So again, you could have picked any number of middle schools to examine on an individual data set and come up with a reasonable recommendation on individual school data. But we had to go deeper than that. For middle schools, we looked at FCI's greater than or equal to point-five. We also had to look at the size of the classrooms in these buildings because middle schoolers growing, right? Getting a little bit bigger. You can't put as many in these smaller classrooms that are under seven-hundred square feet, which means you would have to have added a teacher to a different space, again, eating into the savings and our inability to staff. So that classroom, uh, size was a big component in our, and, uh, as we analyzed how students would move through the middle school system. Again, we wanted to focus on least disruption. So if there were sites over six-hundred students, we didn't, we didn't look at them. Too big, too much to move, too many moving parts. So we focused on that FCI, that classroom space, anything under six-hundred. And then we also looked at magnet. And where magnet comes and helps with this whole process are twofold. First, we have some redundant magnet themes. We have, we have themes that are replicated through the district. So as we look to try to be more efficient, could we consolidate some of those schools that offer the same magnet theme where families can, if they like that theme, they could go to one of the others that are out there? So that was a component. Um, additionally, magnets, somewhat self-correct enrollment, because if you are at a magnet location, you've selected the theme. If you want a, to have that theme, we'll have a choice. There's, in our magnet, and particularly in the middle school, there's some locations that have very few neighborhood populations. The majority of their populations are coming in for the theme. So again, as we looked at the, the dollars that we could save, the staffing we could capture, looking at a magnet opportunity saves us more dollars, provides more staff to deploy because the students aren't necessarily all focusing in on one welcoming school. They're going to be spread out through the district by self-selection. And then the, the, the right side of this chart then are the other factors we considered. Proximity to nearby schools. Will those receiving or welcoming schools be able to take those students without significant staff input investment? And how do we minimize the impact on the system through boundaries, right? Least number of changes. So with that, um, we are proposing we close two middle schools. Our middle school selections are Hadley Middle School and Jardine STEM and Career Explorations Academy Magnet Middle School. As we look at some of the specific data points related to those two selections, Hadley has a point-six-two FCI score. It is fifty-one percent utilized. Fifty-seven percent of its classrooms are under seven-hundred square feet, which was, as we looked at our options, that was the problem with bringing kids to Hadley, was we would have had to add a lot more staff. And Hadley already has nineteen vacancies in their building, a significant number of vacancies in that particular building. The enrollment at Hadley has dropped eighteen-point-six percent in the last four years. It started the year at five-hundred-and-seven. It's currently sitting around four-hundred-and-sixty-one. So we have less than five-hundred students being impacted and we have four middle schools that surround the Hadley boundary. I'm going to show you that map. This is not, this map is current. This isn't the boundary changes. That information will be coming out, um, as, after we meet with parents and we have those conversations. This is currently the Hadley boundary surrounded by Wilbur, Hamilton, Marshall, and PV Middle. And you can see, it really sits right in that center where dividing, dividing that particular boundary area up over those schools, the remaining four schools, there's some logic to that, right? It, it's an easy kind of slicing here and there to get kids to those other locations. If we look at Jardine, Jardine is point-five-five FCI. Jardine has no secured entry and it will be, and it's been put off and put off and put off because it's an extremely expensive addition. This building is not well-suited for a secured entry. Seventy-one percent utilized, it's, so it's slightly better than some of its peers, but seventy percent of its classrooms are under seven-hundred square feet. And so again, moving students in from other schools to Jardine becomes very problematic. This particular school is less than five-hundred-and-seventy-five students. It started the year around five-hundred. It started the year around five hundred, we've placed some students there, so it's sitting around five fifty now, but only a hundred and ninety actually are neighborhood students. The rest are being bussed in, or coming in through the magnet process. And this is where we, again, as, as those families look at their options, the, the, the hundred and ninety will go to Mead if they don't make another selection. Mead is the receiving or welcoming school. Brooks, STEM Magnet is the similar theme, and it has capacity to take students. So, those other, those others, the non-neighborhood students typically will disperse out to other magnet options, which, again, so self-corrects enrollment without adding a lot of staff. If you look at the boundary of, the current boundary between Mead and Jardine, you can see that it's, it's, again, a fairly logical move that Jardine students that live in that particular neighborhood would become part of Mead. So, I'll pause one minute before we go on to elementary. The elementary school evaluation process, slightly different than middle, different issues, different challenges, certainly a lot more locations. So, the hard data we looked at related to the elementary school evaluation process, we looked at FCI scores greater than point seven. We looked at schools that had low utilization rates, so less than sixty-five percent. We looked at locations where enrollment declines might have exceeded twenty percent or more. Under three hundred and fifty students, so again, we're talking impact and staffing levels being kind of the primary concerns. And just like at the middle school level, we needed to look at, also at magnet to kind of round out the, the, the staffing and the financial components of, of our recommendation. So, it's, it's, any one of the locations may not have met all the criteria, but they will fit into one of those categories. Again, the other considerations are the same as middle. Proximity to schools that have capacity to take the students, where we don't have a major staff investment required, and minimizing impact on the system. So, the four schools that we are proposing at the elementary level to close would be Clark Elementary School, Cleveland Traditional College and Career Readiness Magnet, Park Elementary School, and Payne Elementary School. As we looked at Clark, Clark has an FCI of point seven-six. Fifty-one percent utilization rate, less than three hundred students. A thirty-six percent enrollment drop since two thousand and sixteen. It is a location that does not have a dedicated cafeteria, so it has to flip between the gym and the lunch every day. There are, there is available capacity at nearby schools, and we'll show you that map here in a minute. Clark does not have a secured entry. We would be looking at welcoming students that attend Clark at Caldwell, Beach, and Allen. So, as we look at the map, you can see that Clark kind of sits in the, the V of Caldwell, Allen, and Beach, so boundary decisions will be made to get Clark students to those other three locations. Cleveland was our pure magnet option. The building itself is at point four-three FCI, but it is less than three hundred and fifty students, it has no dedicated cafeteria, and there are two other traditional magnets that have quite a bit of capacity. So, we had quite a bit of redundancy in the traditional magnet theme. And again, because it's pure, there are no neighborhood assigned students, they all come in through the magnet process. So, as that, those magnet selections go back out into the magnet system, we can add those students through the magnet selection process and spread those out without adding, again, a lot of staff to buildings, and we don't impact the classroom size tremendously. Park, Park has the highest FCI score in the district, it's point nine-five. It's about three hundred and fifty students. It does not have a secured entry either, it would be very costly to add one. Right now, Park, for the number of students in that building, that building needs eleven million dollars of deferred maintenance support. It's one of the highest costs per students that we have on deferred maintenance. It also does not have a dedicated cafeteria. There are four elementaries located in the vicinity where Park students would be welcome. They include Irving, Washington, Harry Street, and Linwood. And you can see on the map, Park somewhat sits right in the middle of that particular group of schools, so boundaries will be adjusted so that those students can spread out through the four. There will be, before we get on to Payne, there will be some impact from boundary changes for students that aren't in a closed building, and we're, I want to, I want to park that one for a minute, we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But we, we will have a few students impacted by boundary changes that aren't currently in one of the closed schools. But I don't want to forget, so if I don't, if I don't revisit, revisit it, remind me. Our, the last school is Payne. Payne is a point seven FCI, fifty-nine percent utilizations, three hundred students being impacted, twenty-one percent enrollment drop since two thousand and sixteen, no dedicated cafeteria, and the schools in the neighborhood, in the vicinity, have capacity without adding tremendous number of staff. That would be Lawrence, Stanley, and Woodman. And here, here is Payne on the map, and here's Lawrence, Stanley, and Woodman, which are surrounding it. As the work continues on the boundary considerations, some of the same guidelines that formed our recommendation of the schools will also form boundary considerations. Least disruption to the system, minimizing feeder padding, feeder pattern disruptions, proximity to the schools that we talked about, capacity, the enrollment projections, and then the additional consideration for boundaries is minimizing where students are crossing major highways and roadways. If there, there is still work and feedback and listening to be done around boundaries, that's why we're not bringing you maps tonight. And the other piece that we're not necessarily bringing you tonight are anything to do with the special programs, specifically special ed and some of our English language learner supports, because those pieces are very individualized to student needs. We are evaluating where those programs can best live that have the supports necessary. So, as we get ready to cover the timeline and communication with parents about the proposal, we will also include all of the information related to special programs in that information going to parents. But we're, we're really not quite there tonight. We have a, you know, a tentative plan, but there's some, some work we need to do with school principals. And now that, you know, everyone's been engaged in the, the information we're presenting tonight, we can have those conversations. We are giving parents through this process unprecedented choice. I've looked historically at some of the previous closing activities, we've, we've never done what we're proposing to do, and, and giving parents this kind of wide range of choices. And we'll kind of cover these one by one. If a, if a student is currently enrolled in one of the magnet school closure recommendations, they can apply to another magnet. They will have priority placement in the magnet lottery process, which will increase the odds of getting the placement they, they desire. It does not guarantee enrollment, so we are not promising the slot. That's consistent with how we've handled magnet impacts in the past. Priority placement, but not guarantees. The, the student attending the magnet can choose to attend the newly assigned neighborhood school, and at that point, they really don't have to do anything. The student will just be transitioned over to the welcoming school based on the boundary, and no action really needs to be taken. Transportation for either of those two options would be provided based on policy and the two and a half miles distance from the location. If that, neither of those options are attractive to parents, we, we are offering a special transfer request process where the, the parent can look at another neighborhood school as an option. It will have to be reviewed to make sure that we have the capacity at that particular school, and no transportation will be provided, but that is an option we've never offered before. If a student is currently in a neighborhood school, and that school is recommended for closure, the first option is to, is to attend the newly assigned neighborhood school. If that, if that option is not attractive, then the parent can apply through the magnet process. We will be extending some of those deadlines, we'll cover that here in a minute on our timeline. Those students will go through the regular lottery process. No preference, right? Because they weren't part of the magnet system already, but they can go through the regular mag, magnet lottery. Transportation for those first two options, again, based on the distance from school of two and a half miles, or, again, they can request a special, special transfer to any other neighborhood school. They will be reviewed for capacity, and information will be provided if approved. If, if a student is impacted by a boundary change, so they're not actually attending a school that is closing, but as, as the boundary situation really becomes very clear, and we have some small segments of our population that might be impacted by a boundary change, the, the family would have a number of options. One, to again, attend the newly assigned neighborhood school, no action would need to be taken. Apply for a magnet school through the regular magnet lottery process. Transportation for those two options, again, would be provided based on distance. The parents could choose to have their child grandfathered at the school that they're currently at. We will do that, but there would be no transportation offered if we do that. And then, again, we will offer that same special transfer process, no transportation, but if that, if that is an attractive option for families to explore, we certainly welcome that. So, as we looked at then the total impact to the system on our recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight, we are impacting two thousand two hundred and thirteen students through this process. And that is, that's specific to the closures, it's not including any boundary changes. So, there could still be some of those additional impacted students, but this is closure. The average class size, again, estimated, because we don't know, based on all those choices we're giving parents, exactly where students might want to kind of continue their educational services. But if they, if they're, if we anticipate student moves based on where we think they'll go, elementary average class sizes would be twenty-one point one-four students per teacher. So, at le, I think we're well, at least, into an area that, that, that worry about my classroom's going to be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, or something like that. We've looked at that very, very closely, very closely, to make sure that we weren't doing that through the system. The average at middle schools is twenty-three point eight-nine at the welcoming schools. The elementary number of teachers impacted through closure would be sixty-nine. So, the hope, obviously, is those sixty-nine go into elementary positions through the district. Sixty-three middle school teachers are being impacted potentially through this process. Again, we would hope that those, those positions, those people go into positions through the district. We have them, we're ready. I think your welcoming schools will be with open arms, ready to help the, those particular staff acclimate to new buildings, because they're desperately needed at those buildings. Other staff impacted, a hundred and ninety other staff. Estimated savings on this proposal is sixteen point two million dollars, if everything kind of works the way we believe it's going to work. Which then would bring our deficit for Phase Three to a sixteen point eight million dollar number. Are there other options? There are no easy other options, right? I mean, every, every move at this point has its own set of pros and cons. Most of them are cons at this point. Doing nothing only delays a decision and doesn't solve your staffing problem, which is, again, remembering why, why we're looking at this particular solution is to help some of the staffing issues. We've reviewed the data, we've listened to the feedback, we've tried to look ahead. I hope that that's, that's visible in some of the work we've presented tonight, that we didn't just look at one piece of data in a, in a vacuum, but that we've really tried to anticipate impacts through the systems. It won't be perfect. It's, it's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of choice still to be made, but I think we've, we've at least anticipated some of the major questions, and as the board kind of vets through, hopefully, we can provide some additional data as, as is needed. I've got my book, because I wasn't going to trust my memory on all of this data we looked at. But again, thinking of the, again, that every student future-ready, how do we best serve every student to be future-ready? We believe that this is, this is the direction that, that meets that goal. So, in our proposed timeline, we're, tonight is our school closure proposal. Tomorrow, and not that, that we're anywhere close to the vote, but we know people will have questions, and there will be a lot of what-if and uncertainty, and we need to kind of wrap around, if the, if we move forward, here's what could happen. And we need to meet with our staff and cover that, and we need to communicate with our families, and we need to have meetings and go through all this. HR and support staff will go to close, our proposed closing buildings tomorrow to have meetings with impacted staff, to start to alleviate and answer some of those questions that will obviously come up through the course of the evening and into tomorrow, and probably into the next few weeks. And in fact, every single site will have a dedicated HR specialist assigned just to that building, who will be in charge of kind of helping every employee at that particular building through, through the hiring processes, and all of that. They'll be kind of hand-holding so that there's, there's no confusion, there's no, I don't know what to do. There will always be a resource. As we talked about earlier, the magnet deadlines are extended through March twenty-second. That announcement, I think, will be official as of tomorrow, we'll make that. By Friday, we should have letters going out to parents, which would include the bound, the suggested boundary change and the student assignment options I outlined for you tonight, giving those, those, that level of choice and ownership in where students go. Two twenty-one through two twenty-six, we would be looking at parent meetings so that we can have some really more in-depth dialogue into challenges or concerns, or just getting that feedback from, from, from where parents are sitting as they process their mailer and what that means for their students. On the twenty-first, there's also an application workshop for impacted staff. Again, HR staff will help them through the process, but if they want to take a little bit more individual ownership, we have some self-help things that we'll offer. Trying to meet people on all levels and all different places. On two twenty-nine will be our public hearing, where we will listen to feedback regarding the proposal as required. And then, on March fourth is the vote, if the board wants to proceed with this option of school closure. We talked early on about the timeline implications of making a decision before spring break to allow for the implementation of all these changes to start to occur. We are proposing this tonight as a package. At this point, there isn't pulling one school off to substitute in another, because every single move like that requires more analysis, more looking at the staffing, and we've done a lot of that already. So, we're bringing the board, what we feel is the best combination of getting a home for every staff member impacted, the least impact to the system, the savings goal that we had, that we had wanted to try to achieve for an immediate forty-two million dollar shortfall, and that we were only going to try to address a little bit, not even half, through this process. So, we feel, we feel pretty comfortable that that's what we've achieved through the process. There will be those that disagree with the components we looked at, but again, we'll go back to, I've got all the, we've mapped out all the moves, right? As far as where staff could go to fill spots, and we feel very confident we could get there, and we could get the savings number we're after. Again, that's the financial and the data points. The emotional pieces and the struggles, that's, that's a, that's a different thing we'll have to help our families and staff work through, but financially, we feel really very solid on what we're proposing. So, important things to, for staff to know. We talked about the dedicated HR specialist. There will be some extra paid time for packing and setting up classrooms, we're going to do all of those things. There's a whole list that HR will There's a whole list that HR will cover. There will be information on the website, questions and answers, anything, many different ways for staff to find information. And again, HR will deploy in-person tomorrow. And then we have a dedicated website address, which is www.usd259.org/transform24 for all those staff-type questions. For families, there will be supports available for students tomorrow at the closing schools. Because, again, it's emotional. Adults will struggle. Students might need some processing time. We will have supports at schools. We don't know if they'll be needed, but if they are, they're available. We will have those listening sessions for families to work through the processes. We will have a dedicated customer service support team to answer questions, because sometimes the school may not have all the answers, but our, this dedicated line, that's their job, right? Is to handle those calls, answer the questions. If they don't know, they will find out. And they will have expanded hours for families who need a call before or after business hours. And again, we're trying to give as much choice, unprecedented choice, through the process for impacted students and families. Again, same website for information that families might need to, as they come after tonight and a couple days later, and they're still processing, they can go to the website to find out more information. Again, our, that customer support, parents' support center, the hours of operation will be, the hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. We have a dedicated phone line, so that, again, with people to answer the phone, related specifically just to this, right? Email address, if they prefer to email questions and want an email response, something in writing, we can handle that. And again, the website will be updated regularly, kind of based on the, if we're getting the same question over and over again, we'll constantly be updating the frequently asked questions, so we're getting as much information out to staff as we can. Our recommendation, and again, we'll correct the, we're going to correct the date on this particular slide. But we are asking tonight, administration recommends the board establish 6:00 p.m., February 29th, 2024, as the public hearing on this topic at the Alvin Morris Administrative Center, so it won't be here, Room 813, and approve the proposed notice of public hearing for publication in the Wichita Eagle, and it will be on the 14th and the 18th. The 19th's a holiday. Correct that piece on the slide. And with that, I'm going to grab my water, and you guys can think through your questions.
And I'd like to summarize. First off, by thanking Susan. You know, we've said a lot throughout the course of this, people over places, that our people are biggest investment, our most important investment. And when all, when we have multiple options and all of them have cons to them, all of them have negatives to them, you know, we're trying to decide what do we prioritize. And I believe, you know, our choice is to prioritize our people. We've been saying that throughout this entire process. So I want to lift up the thoughtfulness that's gone into it by the team. And you see Susan's binder there. That binder is a culmination of the work of a lot of these people sitting in the room that have pulled together over these last three weeks and processed one of the hardest decisions that you will have to make as a board and we would have to make as a district in closing a school. I can't think of much more difficult of a decision that we might have to make. But we also need to confront the facts, you know, the facts of declining enrollment, the facts of how we've decided during COVID to prioritize people. We've made those decisions, and now the facts are leading us to what's really, really hard. Even though it's hard, I think our goal as a team, as a district-level team, is to be as restorative and relational and supporting our people as possible. If our people are our priority, I hope you see in the thoughtfulness of what we've put together that we can't just leave people out to dry. We can't just say, well, the vote's, you know, in March, and we'll let you know then what's going to happen. People need answers. They need to know if this is the direction we continue to go. What does that mean for me? What's that mean for my livelihood, my family, for my walk to school, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So that's part of why all of the thought's been put into what it is we're doing, what it is we're recommending, because we want this to be a supportive process for all of our people all across the district. Our staff, our support staff, our administrators, our families, our communities, the surrounding communities around each of our school buildings. So none of this has really been taken lightly, not that you would think it would be, but hours and hours and hours of thought and work have been put into where we've arrived. It isn't ideal that this is, you know, the situation we're confronted with. But in my mind, if we're going to have to make a hard decision like this, we're going to be who we are, and who we are is restorative and loving to our teachers and our families. We're going to try to work with them as best that we can and make this as smooth. In a bad situation or, you know, an unideal situation, we're going to make it as good as we can as a staff. So I wanted to just lift that up, that that's our approach. That's part of why, you know, we're, 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, we're going to be there for families who might tonight be feeling like, what's going on? I don't know, you know, what does this mean for me? We want to be there for families to support them. And not just tomorrow, but throughout the entire process, because there'll be questions along the way that come up. So with that, if you guys have any questions from the board, we would be happy to answer.
Kathy?
Susan, thank you. DLT, thank you. This was a very hard thing for you guys to have to do, and it's going to be even harder for us to vote. I need clarification. Not for me, but for the community and for those that might not understand. Sometimes you have to say things more than once to get to understand. On page 13 of your slide, would you please re-explain what the FCI is for the sake of those who might not understand that acronym?
Yeah, Susan, you want to take it?
You guys can correct me from behind if you'd like to. So the work that the facilities group has been doing related to the Facilities Condition Index is an evaluation of kind of the systems in the building and looking at that point of where you have the value of those systems that need to be replaced because they are to the end of their useful life. And the ratio has to do with if you were going to replace the building, right? At what point do you make that decision to just simply replace versus go in and make those adjustments to the systems? So the higher that score, .7, .8, I mean, really, anything over a .5, you're starting to head down that direction, where you need to really analyze, do you continue to invest in making the changes to the system? Or is it more cost-effective to replace and kind of build new? And that's, as we looked at those building, and again, that's a fluid number, right? Because systems go out of their useful life all the time, every day, right? Something that we might have had a roof replaced 20 years ago on February 12th, right? We might be to end of useful life, and then that FCI score will change. And if we make a repair that extends the useful life, then that FCI score changes. So it isn't a static number. It's kind of constantly evolving and things. We make our improvements. We make repairs. We do replacements. If something just completely goes down and we have no choice but to replace, like an HVAC system, right? You're not going to go without air or heat in a building. Then the FCI score changes based on those repairs. But that's what we're looking at related to kind of a closure decision is on those buildings that are aging, have high FCI scores. You know, what makes sense to continue to operate them, make the investments in repairs? Or really, as part of the master planning process, at what point do we start to say, we really need to consider some sort of new construction? Or a new addition, or something that really changes that whole trajectory of just extending useful lives over the course of time? That's why for us, it was a factor, but it wasn't the key factor. And that's why you saw kind of varying FCI scores through our recommendation is because that's really more of a concern, like long-term facilities master planning. How, what are we going to do as far as the entire group of school buildings related to aging? What does our community want? For us, related to a $42 million budget reduction, the FCI score was important, but it wasn't the most important criteria. Thank you. Go ahead.
A couple of things that aren't in the FCI that Susan did mention are a secured entrance. So we're just talking really about deferred maintenance and kind of mechanical systems. So secured entrance isn't part of that. If you have to flip your gym to a lunchroom every day and run your entire master schedule around that, that's not part of FCI. So that's, you know, the FCI was the central circle, and we looked beyond that for when we were making determinations, so.
I have two more questions. Would you please reiterate, I'm glad that you put down the misunderstandings that our community might have with our district, could you please reiterate again restricted funds, unrestricted funds, designated funds, and undesignated funds? A lot of people might not understand, yep, we do have a lot of money, but we can't use it.
Sure. And if anyone's interested in kind of looking at our list of unencumbered cash balances, because, again, we want to be transparent. We welcome people to ask questions and look at our information. It actually is online, and you look at our adopted budget, and it's the very last page of the adopted budget book. And it's called Unencumbered Cash Balances. Again, they are at a point in time, and this particular one, it's on July 1st. So July 1st of every year, we report to KSD these balances. And it gives a historical look back. So you can kind of see where the district has either grown or decreased cash balances over the course at least of two to three years. So it's good information to kind of look at. When you're looking at this particular form in the adopted budget book, it does not go through on that page what is restricted and what is not restricted. So you kind of have to go back into other parts of the budget book if you're really wanting to read through what the purpose of the fund is. But in, just to kind of point out a few highlights, bond and interest, we talked about, right? At 73, almost $74 million, that's restricted in that it cannot be used to cover teacher salaries or pay for custodial help or add a para. That money is designated restricted to paying the bondholders who are holding our debt. We're paying them through the course of the life of our bonds. Another, nutrition services, another great example of a restricted fund. The 24 fund as of July 1st was sitting at almost, a little over $13 million. That particular fund is primarily federal in nature. We get the majority of our nutrition services through the federal government. You cannot spend nutrition services funds on anything not related to nutrition services. You put your entire meal program at risk, right? You cannot do it. So, again, it can be used to make improvements to, say, a cafeteria area, but it cannot be used, again, to pay for teacher salaries, to pay for para help and an administrative assistant. Capital outlay is a restricted fund in that there are very specific rules on what you can spend capital outlay on. Again, you cannot run teacher salaries through capital outlay. You can pay for your repairs and maintenance. You can pay for technology. You can pay for school uniforms. Those are the type of expenditures we can push into capital outlay. But it is not for the general operational expenditures of the district. Gifts and grants, another good example. Those gifts and grants we receive that are specifically targeted to an initiative. You know, we have a donor that wants to support a particular school. That goes into gifts and grants. It can only be spent on the purpose that the donor set out in the donation at the particular school where they wanted those funds to be spent. We can't sweep that and say, we're going to use it over here. So a whole variety of our funds have either, they are restricted in nature or they have restrictions in how they can be spent. Even at-risk, which we would actually include as part of our operational balances, we are not free to spend at-risk dollars any way we want to. We have a list of things we can spend at-risk on. And it is a defined list, and it has to be word for word on the evidence-based practice list. Otherwise, it cannot go into at-risk funding. So all of that nuance goes into how we allocate funds through the process, what we can spend dollars on. And as we look at end-of-year cash and how we're going to support the fiscal year '24, '25 budget, we will look at those funds that have operational balances and determine, this is where we're comfortable spending that down. Again, understanding that doing that buys us a little time, but it does not solve the budgetary deficit long-term.
Okay, just one more. Payne Elementary, you mentioned, as one of the schools that you're proposing to close. That's a Title I school, am I correct? So how is that going to affect the students if they are going to be sent to different locations with their Title I aid?
So Title I will follow the students. So the, and the majority of closing, because, again, remember that our district as a whole is high poverty. 80% of our population is free and reduced lunch, right? I mean, that's, the bulk of our students are on some sort of free or reduced meal plan. That means the majority of our elementary and a good chunk of our middle are already receiving Title I. As the receiving school's increased number of students in their building, they will get more Title I allocation to address the student needs going into that building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Knock?
On page 24, with regard to the proposed timeline, what opportunities will there be for student engagement, specifically in the students whose schools are closing?
Student engagement?
Yep.
Well, I would imagine student engagement will start tomorrow. With our staff meetings that we're having, we also have a plan for counselor support and support for students in the buildings. If they're struggling with, you know, with where am I going next year? What does this mean? All of that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the triage from the outset. Really, I mean, I guess I see this as, you know, students and parents making decisions together when it comes to magnets, when it comes to choices. If I like a STEM theme, you know, we'll want to go and apply, you know, to another STEM magnet option. Or if we just like Jardine because it was a magnet, maybe we look at other magnets and other things we might be looking for. So I think those kind of next-year type decisions really are probably family decisions, but there will be a decent amount of students, well, not a decent amount. There'll be student support in the buildings this week to help, elementarys and middle schools.
February 21st to the 26th, there are parent meetings. Would it be possible to change the title of this to parent and student meetings? Or is this something different?
No, and actually, we've kind of been calling them community meetings, actually, because it's really not even restricted to parents, although we feel that that's who will probably be most interested. But yeah, including students in that is a great idea.
And so those would be open to the public as well, the parent meetings? Or is the public involvement more so with the public hearing?
No, I mean, they would be, they would be open to the public. Yeah.
My next line of questions has to do with the decision criteria with the school closures. Part of this is in my ignorance. If I wanted the board and the public to have a comprehensive report that outlined all the different criteria that went into decision-making, the weighting... all the different criteria that went into decision-making, the weighting of those decisions? And then like what schools fell and did not fall under that criteria? Would I have to make a, a board motion for it or would that be something we could?
I would probably defer to President Reiser, but that sounds like a written request from the board table. There would be some conversations we want to have about, about, you know, about what, how much, how much time that takes and what that looks like. So I don't know if that's how you would approach that, Stan, or?
Yeah, I think, Noc, I think what the criteria was outlined in the presentation, and I apologize, I got cough drops. Fighting a little bit of a head cold. But I think what, as Susan mentioned, you're not going to get a perfect black and white rubic that says all these criterias fell into one rubic cube. So what, because of the fact of figuring out things such as transfers, who can, who can take these students, that kind of a thing. So, but if you want to try and make that type of a motion during board request, you sure can. I think the only thing you have to be considering of, is we're going to all spread out very quickly, staff included. And so just be consideration, take consideration of time.
So was there a formal reporting, like a formal documentation or reporting process in terms of like deciding which schools to close or keep? Again, like a lot of this is just for clarification.
Susan, I mean, Susan went through each decision on the six buildings.
And I don't know if, I don't know if this answers what you're asking.
I was going to say, maybe I'm not missing, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question.
But as Susan, you know, we, it's almost been kind of an exclusionary process, right? And that, the slide that has kind of the greater than signs, then, yeah, this, there you go. They had it pulled up, right? Twenty-four of fifty-four sites were under three fifty. So in that terms, we, we kind of excluded thirty of the buildings, so to speak, that were of a certain size. And then we kind of gone, went through all the paces. That, that isn't a perfect, that isn't perfectly how we did it. Because there were some overlap and we came back to some and et cetera. But really, all fifty-four buildings were, were considered, if that makes sense. So, but there was FCI considerations, utilization, enrollment trends, size, and then classroom size, capacity of surrounding neighborhood schools. I mean, those were the main criteria that we used, but we really ran pretty much every building through all those paces with the exception of the K eights and the high schools and the special schools to, to arrive where we arrived. So, but I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
Kind of, kind of does. I'll, I'll make a board motion later. So the next question, page twenty-five, so in terms of there is no pulling one school and substituting another, is this because of board policy or?
No, it's the, it's the, it's meeting the timeline.
It's meeting the timeline, okay. And so if?
And, and really it's, it's that we have, we feel pretty strongly, we've, we, to, to your point as far as what was the process? That we went through a pretty rigorous process, maybe not with the, a scoring matrix, exactly what you're describing, but went through this school with this criteria. Does it work on the staffing side? No, park that one, move another one in. What does that, so that process we've done. So at this point, to go back and reopen, to, to sub in a different set of, of schools that again, would require us to go back and look back at staffing, which we've already done, and go back to say, can we, will everyone still have a job, which we do, which they do in our proposal, would again, take time. And given our timeline of trying to get a decision before spring break and getting all the publications, we feel very strongly, we'd be circling the drain on this for weeks, if not months, and still come back to, if you want to minimize impact, if you want to fill every seat, if you want to get to a, and not overshoot or undershoot your target of, of, of the financial target, then we're, we feel we're here. And to stop and again, sub in one school for another, we, we feel we've done, we've, we've done that exercise and we've brought you the best proposal.
But in, I'm sorry, so in theory, board could make a substitute motion, but based on recommendations, just on your analysis, it would be advised against, just for the timeline and efficiency?
Yeah, I mean, I think out of, I don't know how to say it, out of fairness, you know, if you picked, you know, building X and said, well, you know, instead of that elementary, let's put this elementary in there, there's a chance we don't save any money off of that substitution, right? There's a chance that all of the staff that are moved from that closing school have to go to the surrounding schools because those schools are already full. So, I mean, if, you know, that, that's kind of the challenge and that, I mean, that, that's the work we've been doing. That's the binder full of stuff. I mean, right, right there is the work we've done to really go through all of the angles and all of the thoughts and all of the considerations to try to, try to come up with what we feel is the, the best solution. But yeah, to, to sub those out at this point, we would, I mean, it would, it would put us at risk of hitting the, the target number for the reduction. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And then this is my last question, but thinking of nationwide context and a lot of studies that have looked at school building closures, it's generally the schools where most of the students are socio-economically disadvantaged or most of the students are predominantly black and or brown. I think for me, my question is, how can we ensure equity throughout this entire process?
You know, I think, I think I look at our staff and I, I think, I see a, a group of people that is, has a heart for equity. That we are, we, I mean, ideally, we're growing enrollment, we don't have to make any of these decisions, right? But we heard it from the kids tonight, from the high school kids about the equitable experience across the board. And if you, you look at the FCI scores and the range of FCI scores, we don't really have an equitable experience right now, right? We have, we have kids going into schools every day, they don't have secure entrances, that they have to eat lunch where they have P E. We have middle schools without air-conditioned gyms, I mean, on and on and on and on. So I hope in a master plan, we can get to a really, that idea where we can really look at, what does equity mean across the district? We were, we were trying to find, you know, we, we had, the, the buildings that were selected are on four different board districts. They're all across the, all across the, the city. They're in, mostly in elementary or schools with declining enrollment. So it's not as though we were picking on a certain parts of town or anything like that. And we really, we really went through all the paces. We, we looked at academic data, we looked at poverty data, we looked at ra, racial demographic data. We looked at all of these things when we were with the buildings that are closing or proposed to be closed and the welcoming schools to see what that experience is going to be like for kids. So I, I hope that answers your question, but I really, I mean, I, I know in my heart that, that we, we used every tool we could to make this as equitable as possible.
Those are all the questions they have, thank you.
Thank you, Noc. Melody?
Thank you. So actually, some of my questions will probably bridge and or rest on what Noc has just stated. And you'll have to just excuse me because I have several questions and I know, Susan, we've kind of chatted about it before. But what I'd like to start with is that it, it, it pains me to have to make these decisions, period. I want to thank every single one of the individuals that sent me notes or sent me letters. I, I have every one of them and that includes the Abbott programs. I want to thank you for sending those because it's not falling on deaf ears. I've read every one of them. And there's a decision that needs to be made. So I simply wanted to say that initially. But when we look at the questions that I have, and I'll just, I actually numbered them, there's several. I'm going to start with the budget, though. This is going to dovetail into what, what board member Kathy has been trying, has been getting to. And that is, I have specific questions. So when you look at the unencumbered balance, seven, seven twenty, twenty twenty-three, is unencumbered balance the same as cash, first of all?
So the word unencumbered in, in really any governmental accounting means that there is no, there's no, it's after your obligations are accounted. So we have a, we might have a cash balance at June thirty, our fiscal year end, in the bank. But if we have a purchase order that says you've signed a contract that you're going to pay for this, then we encumber the funds into that particular fiscal year. And so then the balance, so cash less encumbrances gets us to unencumbered cash. So the cash balance is kind of less those obligations that the district has entered into some sort of formal contractual agreement to pay.
Okay, thank you. So July first, twenty twenty-three, our cash balance, which is going to be our unencumbered balance also, it looks like was something close to two hundred and eighty-four million?
Correct.
Seven hundred and eighty thousand, you know, give or take. And the major line items that would have come out of those are going to be capital outlay, seventy-seven point two million. And then we've got food service, which is the thirteen, a little over thirteen million. And special education, which is nineteen nine, right at twenty million. A special reserve fund of sixty million, a little over sixty million, three hundred and ten thousand. And contingency reserve for thirty-one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand. Bond and interest, which is the seventy-three nine, right at seventy-four million. And then there's a negative with federal funds, which states forty-three, negative forty-three million, seven hundred and ninety-eight. I'm saying all of those to say that that's a lion's share of that two hundred and eighty-four million, right there. That is unencumbered. It's probably, no probably about it. It's obligated, it's a portion of it is obligated. We haven't actually paid it out, so that's why those dollars are still sitting there. Could I say that and be correct?
Well, the, the, these dollars would be unobligated, right? Because we would, unencumbered would mean unobligated cash balances.
So all of those dollars?
Right, there's not a contractual obligation. There's a plan, right? Unrestricted or un, in this case, does not mean there's not a plan.
Right.
Particularly capital outlay, we have a capital outlay plan really for the next five years. We have a textbook adoption plan for the next five years. We have, we know what our bond and interest payments are through two thousand twenty-nine. So we've got plans for almost every single fund on here with the exception of contingency reserve. Your contingency reserve is your savings account, if you will, your safety net. And in our case, where a month of expenditures for the district operationally is over fifty thou, uh, over, um, over fifty million a, a month, essentially, if you kind of agree with me. Having thirty-one million in kind of your savings does not even give you a month's worth of reserves in your savings account, which again, you look at all your best practices from an accounting standpoint, that's not, that's not a lot. And you think of, you know, like when we had Storm Yuri in two thousand twenty-one, where we had the, the big freeze and electric rates shot up to ridiculously high amounts, or gas did. And districts across Kansas, let alone the nation, you know, kind of had to struggle with, no one anticipated gas rates going up, you know, a ridiculously high amount of money. So having some areas in your budget where you have some flexibility to deal with the unforeseen circumstances that can come at you, whether it's weather, whether it's legislative, whether it's economic, there's a whole variety of things that can happen that you do your best to anticipate, but you can't plan for everything. You've got to have some unplanned reserves in, on the books. Now, a few of these, and special ed is a good example. Special ed reserves exist because we don't get state aid for special ed until October. So we try to have some dollars in special ed to make sure that we can kind of cash flow until we get the, those bigger payments of state aid because they're not, they're not given to us July first. And there's several cases, you know, capital outlay is another one. If you don't have enough reserves in capital outlay, you're doing nothing in the fall because we don't get capital outlay money until January and February. So there's reasons why there's balances in these accounts, cash balances. There's a few that are definitely carry forward year to year. Professional development, pre-K, those were fallout, right? Well, maybe we didn't hire a pre-K teacher, we didn't do a professional development. We carry that forward and we budget it into the next year. That's what we're doing with those funds to help kind of offset some of the increases. You know, whether it's a contractual increase or we're able to do a little bit more with professional development, for example. Maybe we're able to hold some additional PD events, those kind of things, because we have some additional dollars. But the bulk of the, what's here is planned, there's a plan for every single line item except for contingency. That's your true, there is no, there is no plan because we don't want to plan. That is for emergency-type purposes.
I mean, we could almost call it, sometimes you can call it a rainy day too. Because it's, we're putting it aside. How about the special reserve fund? Can you?
The sixty million of special reserve, that is the health plan and property casualty and workers comp. And we're self-insured, so we pay those claims directly. We have kind of catastrophic levels. If something really bad happens, then our, our catastrophic pieces of insurance kick in. But for your kind of every day, it's ten thousand here or fifty thousand here, we're, we're writing checks for that.
Right. So once again, though, this, the unencumbered funds are planned.
Yes.
They just have, the checks have not been written.
Correct.
So that's, that is cash?
Yes.
Sitting, some of it is probably restricted, my?
Yes, absolutely.
Several of those dollars are absolutely restricted. What's the negative federal funds?
So that's the impact of pandemic relief. Because the way pandemic relief works is you spend it. So we've basically borrowed funds from the other funds. The federal government owes us some money back. And then they'll replenish those funds. So really, in, in a total, it's actually a little bit higher because of the pen, because of the negative federal. But again, the, as we look at, you know, that federal spend, some of the reason cash balances are somewhat higher, if you look historically, has again been the impact of ESER funding. Look, and that's, for example, specifically the health plan reserve. Some of how that particular fund has gone up is because we've increased para hours through federal funds. That was part of our ESER strategy. So the board contribution for those people who have hadn't, didn't have benefits but have benefits now are coming out of federal funds, federal ESER, went into the health plan to help support the, the additional people in there.
Okay.
So there's been some benefits in other areas because of federal COVID relief funding.
So those are dollars that are going to sit there for?
Until we, until we have claims that's spent. And right now, if we look, last year, our claims expense was about five, a little over five million a month. Inflation, some larger claims, various reasons, we're averaging closer to six right now. So again, we would anticipate some of those reserves starting to be eaten a little bit and go down. We have a plan, right, a long-term health strategy for the health plan that we monitor and we're working with our consultants to make sure that that health plan stays healthy so that it can pay for the, and again, we've done unheard of work related to our health plan because our staff contributions have remained flat for a number of years. You don't see that very often.
And so as you have already stated, Susan, that we will use some cash, but we have to understand that this cash is one-time usage because it's not being readily repeatedly refilled. So I just wanted to be able to clarify, you know, for my sake, all of these numbers. Because budgets are all of these numbers, because budgets are not necessarily, I mean, this is not easy to read. And, and I know that it's, it's not easy for individuals that don't have the tutelage, or the, you know, we're, we get additional information, I was gonna say tutors, but you, you know, to be able to walk through all of this. So I wanted to be able to make that public. Okay, so next. There are, there's, let me actually get to my notes here. So, um, with the, I'm, now I'm on page, page eighteen, page eighteen, under the operational financial phase-two solution. So when we look at the one, the estimated or projected one-point-two billion dollars in deferred maintenance, I mean, that is what we're estimating, well, it's probably been pretty much confirmed, in deferred maintenance. So when we, if and when we actually follow through, execute on, and implement phase-two, do we have an estimate of how much we're going to save on that?
That's, I have that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have it total, but I have it by school.
Okay.
Let me find my tab, deferred maintenance. And I think I quoted Park already. Park's deferred maintenance number was almost eleven million dollars.
Yes.
Clark is at eight-point-three million dollars of deferred maintenance. Payne is five-point-one million dollars. Cleveland is four-point-four million dollars. Jardine is fifteen-point-seven million dollars. Hadley is almost seventeen million dollars.
Okay, so let's do this quick math here.
Sixty-one point five.
Sixty-one point five million. Million.
Yeah, it's big, it, they're all, they're all big numbers when you're totaling to one-point-two, that's.
Off of the one-point-two billion dollars. I, I, I'm not sure what to say about that, because that is not, that's a dent, quite honestly. Okay, I'm gonna leave that right there. Next point that I have is going to be with, so now I'm on page, page forty-six. Oh, page twenty-three, page twenty-three, slide forty-six. In fact, it's slide forty-five. So when we're talking about, once again, operational and financial impact phase-two, we know approximately how many elementary teachers, how many middle school teachers, and staff. I think we've estimated, we have an estimate of, of savings for all of that. But where and how will the support staff be placed? How does that handle? Because we've talked a lot about teachers, teachers, teachers. And I'm a former teacher, so, but what about other staff? What's that process like?
It will, it will be very similar, right, in that we want our classified staff to have ownership in their next opportunity with the district to the greatest extent possible. And that's why HR staff will be working with all of the categories to walk through. Here are the opportunities, the vacancies that we have, and we have vacancies in custodial. We have vacancies in nutrition services. We have vacancies in the admin assistant ranks. We have, uh, and then there's, 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 there's some one, onesie-twosie-type job categories that, that are kind of unique to each school. But there are a tremendous number of opportunities through the system. And the other thing the board has committed to is that, and that's why, that kind of that, the mix of schools is what it is, so that we can say that no one will lose a job. We'll, we have a, a budget home for each person being impacted, whether they're certified, or classified, or an administrator.
Okay.
Do you want to mention our policy of holding everyone for a year?
I think we talked about it in January, but I'll repeat it, in that in addition to guaranteeing the job, we did not want employees to be worried about a pay rate reduction for at least a year while they're trying to sort out where, where they, what position they want to, to, to take. It isn't so much a, probably a teacher situation, but certainly, on the classified side, some of the jobs are different ranges and different categories. But for one year, for sure, we will hold them at their current rate of pay.
Last, Park Elementary. So, when we look at your criteria, I actually was over at Park Elementary, and I believe the principal there was saying that the student count is right at three-eighty-nine. And I, I remember, I remember you saying that every criteria did not necessarily indicate the reasons why this decision was made, as well as their FCI scores just way, way up there. And, so I, I get, I get that part of it. But when you look at a, a building that has lower chronic absenteeism, which tells me that more than likely, students are very connected. They want to come to school. They, they're, you know, they're doing well. And is this a newcomer building? Is Park Elementary a newcomer building?
It is, okay.
Okay, so we are closing a newcomer, because I was thinking we weren't gonna close any newcomer or special programs.
We, we would relocate those programs.
The program will follow the students, where, where they land.
And so with it being newcomer, what's the next newcomers that Park would, students would, more than likely?
Washington has a newcomer program.
So it would be Washington.
Well, and.
But those decisions have, are, have not been finalized, as far as, because again, there's so many, there's so many individual criteria that go into those programs, that we want to make sure that if, wherever those, we look at the numbers, right, because if there is one at Washington, it doesn't necessarily mean we can just lift and shift that program at Park into Washington. If that is too big, we need to look at a different location with different supports. So that work will be kind of finalized this week as letters get ready to go out. And now that we're kind of public, we can have some more meaningful conversations with principals and building staff to, to say, if, if we are exploring a location for a program, have we thought through everything in that particular building that might be of an issue? Again, we can look at what we're looking at, but really, on some of those special programs, we need to talk to buildings to make sure that we have addressed certain things like bathrooms, or spaces, or whatever, particularly when it comes to special programs. So that, we're not final-final on the program pieces, why we didn't necessarily cover it tonight, because it could change, and we don't want to create more confusion through the process.
And with this program, or with the newcomers, I'm looking at English learner supports. They've got to go into a building where they're strong, very strong, English learner supports. There's, what, sixty-three percent Hispanic population at, student population at Park. I would think a very high migrant, immigrant, uh, population. And so these supports have to follow them. And then, where it's located, if they were going to go down to Washington Elementary, transportation is probably gonna come into play, because the majority of the students are, are walking in, or parents are maybe dropping them off. I, I really have some strong concerns, and I've already shared them with you, Kelly, but I, I have some major concerns about, um, supports. And how, when these students, if this decision is made, how, how the supports will wrap around these students. That's the case for any of our buildings. Let me be very clear about it. But I'm just lifting Park as one, because I think it's very clear, you know, what, what we're doing here is really, you know, it's closing a building that's very centrally located for probably most of those kids. And they're going to either be bust, according to regulation. I'm hopeful that there may be another way to ensure safety for those that would have to walk, because they'd have to go through a downtown area, which has some real challenges. So, I just raised that one school as a, as an example of how this is going to impact children, a community, parents, and, yeah, that, the, the, just that, the climate in that building, that I know that that's gonna be the fact and the case in each and every one of the buildings that we're, that we're planning to close here. So that's, I started with, it pains me to have to go through and make these decisions, because they're not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Hazel?
Yes, Susan, this isn't the first time that we've considered closing schools in recent years, am I correct?
Correct.
And it is not a sudden decision, and we didn't just all of a sudden say, we're gonna need to close schools to cut budget, right?
We, we had had some discussions as early as the eighteen-nineteen school year, looking at some of the, the, the challenges at the time, as far as maintaining budget across all those buildings, and knowing that there was, again, ongoing, ongoing pressure from, from, you know, to keep competitive with wages, to make sure we have the appropriate staffing, and, and looking really at the, the, kind of the cost of small elementaries, in particular, but even some middle, smaller middle, compared to their much larger peers, right? You can spread costs over a greater number of students. You know, you take that, even just the building principal. The building principal per student at a small elementary is much more expensive per student than a large elementary with the same salary structure for, for both. So we'd had some conversations, probably would have pushed in hard, but not for COVID. That, that was really the, kind of where we, we kind of stopped and dealt with that issue, and then following the, the, kind of that immediate closure and reopening and all of those issues, then it was pandemic relief funds, and are we going to spend them appropriately? And how do we, how do we use them and embed them for the best recovery for students? So yes, historically, even going back, I have a, I have a school closure history list, if you have any interest in it. But two thousand three, I mean, we, I've had it for years, right? I mean, you go back in the hundred-and-fifty-year history of which top public schools, there's a lot of closing and opening. But even since two thousand three, you know, Kellogg Elementary closed, I think, as Paul mentioned that last meeting booth, Early Childhood closed in oh-three, Funston Elementary in oh-four, Alcott in oh-six, Metro Meridian, Metro Midtown and Metro Meridian, those were part of budget cuts, kind of following the Great Recession and the school funding reductions to base aid. Two thousand twelve, the Black Bear Boys and Academy at Price Elementary closed. Two thousand twelve, there was a series that was part of budget reductions and opening of new schools in the bond. And there were several schools, Bryant, Emerson, Lincoln. So, and, and then obviously the move from southeast. So there has been a, a, a regular history of looking at demographic changes, student enrollment changes, financial conditions, the bond impacts of various initiatives that were kind of put into place, and closures have occurred.
And I would, just to piggyback on that a little bit, because of everything that Melody said, it's a hard decision that we, we want to try to do everything else before we have to do this. And so that's why COVID, the ESER money allowed us to, to not have to make the decision, which in a lot of ways was the right decision, because, because it is so disruptive and, and so harmful to the culture of, of the schools that we create, we want to, you know, we want to try not to make the decision. And so that, you know, it's easy to kind of look in the rearview mirror and judge the past, and, you know, what people had decided in the past, but, you know, I think all of us, if, if some donor came and gave us forty million dollars tonight, we would probably not close any of these six buildings, right? I mean, that, we would make a different, a different decision, so.
But it would only be a temporary fix.
That's true.
It wouldn't be.
I don't know that I agree with the superintendent on that one.
We'd still be looking in the future.
It's just really hard.
It is really, really hard. It's really hard.
Okay, my next question is on page twenty-five, slide forty-nine. You say, there is no pooling one school and substituting another. And so you're asking us to approve a public hearing on February twenty-ninth. Can you explain why we must have, if we are not negotiating schools or taking and replacing schools, why we must have this hearing on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, I could take that. Essentially, it's state statute, right? We're following state statute and board policy that we would have a hearing. We're doing, you know, kind of two different, different things. The, the public hearing, you know, as we saw tonight with the avid speakers, is a pretty formal process to where people can, can speak to, you know, whatever it is they want to speak to, as far as the, the situation goes. And that is, like I said, part of statute and something that we're required to do. We will, we will listen in that hearing, but there won't be, you know, the opportunity for real dialogue. So that's part of why we're doing the, the parent and student sessions, starting on the twenty-first, in order to have genuine dialogue with families about what is it that you need? What do you, what are the supports you're worried you're gonna lose? What are, what are your questions about those supports? It might be Latchkey, it might be pre-K, it might be ESOL or newcomer services. There's a whole gamut of things that will come up, I'm sure. So, we want to be able to have that opportunity, to have more of a conversational time with families to hear, to hear from them. Board will be invited to those, you know, to participate in, that you can hear along with us. So, it is, it is all part of the process. You know, ultimately, this is the board's decision, you know, this is, you know, you ask us to make a recommendation, so we spent the last two hours giving you a recommendation, and explaining why, why we, why we, why we arrived here. But it, you know, then it becomes your decision, as a board, what you want to do with it. So I don't know if you'd want to throw anything in?
And I, I think that's important to say, that all, all that we're doing tonight is, you're approving the public hearing. You're getting feedback from families as far as, you know, after all the facts that we've presented, is this still the direction you want to go? And if March fourth, you would, you would say no, then we'd have to go back and come up with other solutions to balance the budget that wouldn't involve that school closure. We wouldn't go back and bring a different school closure proposal. So we would be going then to look at staff reductions, program reductions, use of cash, all one-time type of initiatives related to the one, those one-time dollars. And then, again, the, the reduction of staff is an ongoing, but again, we're not solving any of those issues that you've kind of challenged us to look for, for solutions, right? That doesn't, we're potentially exacerbating that staffing issue. We, we, we're using cash for a period of time. We'll have to come back and revisit another set of recommendations in the following year, when there isn't a cash balance to, to go to. So that's why, you know, we're, we've brought the proposal we brought, but again, it is not final. And it won't be final until the vote on March fourth.
And with the current proposal, we, no staff will lose a position. Everyone is guaranteed to move into a position.
That's correct. And, and the advantage we have, again, of having some of that cash balance to help through that process, is that we can hold wages for a year. That's a good use of one-time dollars, right? To ensure that our staff find that, that, that good fit home, and they have the time to do it. That, to offer some incentives and, and pay for the time to pack. And if we utilize all the cash, and we're at the same point this time next year, and we don't have any cash, none of, none of that happens, right? We would be in closing school discussions, and there are no, there's no help, because the cash is gone.
Okay, and I have one more question. We have a school that has a large population of homeless and transient students, and I am just wondering if there's extra support that we are going to be offering for those families?
I, I've chatted with McKinney-Bento about, not, not specifics, but in general, the, kind of that wraparound services. The McKinney-Bento students will have a lot of those same options. Again, we want to give those families choice, just like we give, we're giving the rest of the families choice. And again, if this was their school of origin, then they could go to the new base, which would be the school of origin, or they could go back to wherever the base is where they're living. But the McKinney-Bento staff will actually be walking those families kind of through that, some of those pieces, and providing that additional support, in addition to some of those other listening sessions and family events. McKinney-Bento will wrap, do wraparound services for them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Hazel. Julie?
As, as we've all acknowledged, this is, is very difficult and great concern for the families and the students that are impacted. I do believe, though, that I just heard you say that if the board did decide to pull one of the schools, that we still have the budget shortfall that has to be dealt with, and likely that would go to eliminating some staff positions. Because we've picked this school closure alternative in order to not lose any of our positions. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, I think that that's an accurate statement, and, and the, the flip side of that is, then we, we lose the ability to fill the more vacancies, right? That's the, that's really what we're trying to accomplish, in addition to the savings, the efficiencies and the budget. It's really about getting staff into spots, into the right spots through the district, where we have, you know, those bigger populations of students. So we don't have a school like Hadley with 19 vacancies. I mean, that's a lot for a school to have to figure out how to, to get subs in for that every day. So we're trying to, to, not that every school has that kind of situation, some of them might only have one or two or three, but the system is struggling with staffing. And again, we're making a choice to keep the buildings open and not address the staffing. This proposal tries to get us to address more of staffing, unfortunately, and it's so difficult, but then the building is not as critical as getting the, the people to the students.
So it seems to me that even at the outset of you bringing this proposal to us, that you've done quite a bit of thinking about how, you know, what are the next steps? So already tomorrow, we, we're having meetings with staff and such, and you've got your meetings planned with families, where they will have the opportunity to ask the questions about their particular supports and such that they're concerned about. I, I noticed on page 26, on slide 51, that also, as a part of that support, you've got this phone number where folks can call, you know, if they've exhausted all other sources and we still have concerns, we still have questions, something that hasn't been thought about, they can call that number. Relative to those kind of similar concerns that might happen with teachers or staff members. Again, I, I do feel like you've tried to think through a lot of the questions. I know you've worked, discussed with the union, worked through some of these same questions and, and tried to deal with those concerns. But something that hasn't been thought of, something that hasn't been covered, a concern, a particular concern that a teacher or staff has, what, what, where is their resource?
So that tomorrow, and I believe it's in the HR, the HR packet, they will have a number for their HR specialist, a direct contact, so that if there are those kind of questions, and again, there's going to be a number of resources available. I mean, the principal will have access to information, there'll be a lot of places for that employee to, but if specifically related to employment opportunities, how do I, how do I navigate this process? They will have personalized contact with a name and a number that they can reach out and call. And in fact, for families, I, we certainly would encourage them to actually call the customer service line, even probably before they could call the school, just because those lines are going to be answered specific to this purpose. Sometimes even just getting through to a school, because they're calling in absences and just normal business of school life, there might go where someone doesn't return that call right away. This line will give dedicated support. So if families have immediate concerns, we would encourage them to contact customer service.
Okay, so this 368-8008 for families, and then there'll be a similar number in the packet that they're going to receive from HR for staff?
For staff, yes.
Okay, and then I just have one last question, and, and I'm done. And that is, we've, we've thought a lot about, and again, I commend you for the great deal of thoughtfulness and trying to think ahead of what possible things might happen. You've done a lot of, of thinking regarding those and how to get folks placed and that sort of thing. You know, we're, we're here in, in February, and we've got quite a bit left of this school year. So what are going to be the supports that are provided just to finish out this year, when folks know they're going to be displaced from their school, know that, you know, we're not going to be here anymore, this is going to be our home? Just what, what kind of, kind of ongoing for the rest of this school year supports will be available?
Well, I can name a few, and then if, forget them, Susan can jump in. You know, I, we already started working with principals about, you know, they're, they're the leaders of the building, and the, the tone that they set to finish out the year is going to, going to matter a lot. But, you know, to think about legacy, to think about, you know, the, the imprint they want to, to leave with their, their kids and their staff, as the year comes to an end. We, we've brainstormed, you know, some activities, where we're going to support them through that process, too. In addition to that, you know, they, they will have some, you know, some, some funds that they can do for, you know, T-shirts or whatever, that, you know, that, celebrations that are meaningful, that are part of a transitional process that, that all of us would have, and, and things that they can tailor to make their own, but at the same time that we would support, you know, from a district level. It, it won't necessarily be easy, there's a lot of, I mean, most of, as any principal knows, after spring break, really you're planning for the next year, full bore. So there'll be a lot of adjustment when it comes to that. But, but I believe in our leaders and their ability to, you know, you know, rally the staff and the kids to, you know, have a, have a great end of the year, as hard as that might be. So is there anything I left out? Is that?
No, I think, I think our approach is really, you know, what, what do they need, right? And, and I think that the teams are committed to, you know, quick turnaround responses to those questions, can I, what about? Because they'll be constant for, for a period of time. Flexibility and use of, of funds at the school, right? So that those kind of activities can occur. And really, the, you know, even the things like our employee assistance program, making sure that if, if staff maybe don't need that support tomorrow, but maybe in a week or two, they start to struggle with this whole concept, that we continue to remind that the resources are available, that we have, we have that, that emotional support as, as really people work through the various stages of coming to terms with change whenever they're at. And all of those resources will be available the whole time.
We, we also have some plans for some specific coaching for, for those principals throughout the rest of the year, too, through restorative practices and the trainers there. So, so there'll be, I forgot that, there'll be a little bit of that, too, available.
Thank you.
And we'll keep in mind that not all questions have to be answered at, by midnight tonight, or by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, that this will be an ongoing process. Thank you, Julie. Diane?
Thank you. Superintendent, as the Board of Education, we must focus on improving students' educational outcomes. And so can you speak to the impacts on the learning environment and how the learning environments will improve?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think our primary strategy here is what we know, we know as school leaders, but we also know what the research says, that the most impactful thing we can do to help student achievement is give kids a great teacher in their classroom, right? That's what all the research would show, that, that one of the biggest levers we have is a great teacher. And, and not that our, our long-term subs aren't doing a great job, and, you know, the, the sub-triage that we do in buildings to cover all the vacancies isn't, it's, it's keeping us afloat, but there's nothing like a highly qualified licensed teacher, right? That's dedicated to those kids for the entire school year. And our hope is that by not spreading resources so thin, by, by filling all the vacancies with these, you know, about 120, 130 so teachers, that we're able to better ensure that every kid across the district has that opportunity to learn from a highly qualified teacher. So we, we hope that that's the case, we hope that people stay with us, that take the jobs that are here in the district. We've got a two-year contract, we've got a, a good raise next year, we have no, you know, no insurance premiums increase. We've got, we've got a lot of really great things going. So we, we want to keep people, and our strategy then is by keeping great people, that we will see achievement and outcomes improve.
Okay, thank you. Can you also talk to parent involvement? Are there going to be tours of the new schools? Any meet and greets with the staff for the welcoming schools, where families will be new to those facilities?
Yeah, again, that's, that's probably, kind of like what Stan just referenced, we don't have those scheduled now. It depends a little bit on how, you know, what parents end up choosing. If they choose Magnet, if they choose, you know, Neighborhood, or, or choose to go within their boundaries. But once we get kind of that finalized, then yes, we will have opportunities for, for open houses, both on kind of the staff parent, or, sorry, the student parent level and on the staff level. Because we'll work a lot with the welcoming buildings for, you know, what it is to be restorative, what it is to bring people into your culture. And not that we don't do that already, but, you know, choosing a building voluntarily as a, as a teacher is different than being displaced and then I have to go find something new. So there'll be a particular sensitivity to making sure we welcome in those staff and those, those families as we transition everybody.
Okay, very good. And we've talked about, this is kind of a short-term solution to a longer-term plan, and we've, we've lightly referenced the, the larger facilities master plan. Can you speak to how this does fit into that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I actually would like Luke, if you and Rob want to come. Luke Newman's our Director of Facilities, and Rob Olson is from Cooperative, I'm still calling it Cooperative Strategies. So if you guys could talk, you know, our recommendation of these six schools, how does this fit into maybe the bigger, long-term plan that you guys are working on?
Yeah, so, good evening, I'm Luke Newman, as Kelly said, Director of Facilities. I'm going to turn this over to Rob to, to address the question, since he's the one doing the master planning work. But before I do, I just want to reinforce the value of the master planning, and what that has added to the process, how much it's benefited, benefited, benefited us, as the data has been readily available. It's the necessary data, we've been able to quickly reference it, in the interest of making the best long-term decisions that align with our strategic plan and our, and our master planning, that I'll let Rob speak to.
Thank you, Luke. And as mentioned, my name's Rob Olson. I think that the best thing I, the best way to answer that is we have some key planning guidelines that we like to take into consideration. One of them is looking for equity for students. Are we given and providing an equal opportunity in educational programming to students? That's one thing that we take a look at, and trying to provide that, you know, across the district. And we heard that from students tonight, we've heard it from a lot of folks here talking around these important issues. Another one that we talk about, or that we really spend a lot of time with, is data-driven decisions. A lot of data has been shared with you, and, but it's not that in isolation. That's what we have to be really cognizant of, and I think that Susan and the rest of the team and all the folks put together have, if you guys have identified, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces that go into these difficult decisions. So it's not just about the data, but that's a place to start, and then you start to take a look at, okay, how does that building, you know, what's impacted in the building by itself, the surrounding network of schools, as, as Susan's mentioned, you know, how, how does closing that school impact the schools around it? And then how does it, as you guys have mentioned, you guys have really identified some, some district programming. So how does that school impact the district itself? So, so many pieces to take a look at, and we try to do all of that when we're putting together a long-range facility plan. We're looking at a plan that's about a 10-year plan. And so to get right to it, when we look at the data and looking at some preliminary things, as, as the team here has, we would be in complete support of the buildings that have been identified and proposed in this particular situation. And I think that, in fairness, as you guys have identified, as Susan has looked at, the data tells us that there's going to be some other things that are going to have to happen when we start looking at a master plan, when we look 10 years down the road. What does that look like? So specifically, we're not there to be able to identify that, but when we look at the preliminary data, there's going to continue to be some other decisions that we're going to have to do, whether it's, you know, it's everything from an addition to a closing, to a rebuild, to a consolidation, to, I mean, it's all on the table at this point. I don't think it's fair for us, this early in our process, to be able to identify that. But I think it's fair to say, all of that's on the table when we start looking at some preliminary data for the future and for looking at facilities. Because I think that, in the end, what all of us want is what's best for the kids in Wichita Public Schools. And when we look at it that way, and what we're offering for kids and for the families and for the community, we can make a big impact in how the facilities align with those programmings. And I think that, you know, the question about how to, how the learning environment looks different, I think we start looking at some of the things that were identified tonight was what are some of those missing spaces? You know, is it a shared cafeteria? Is it a really small classroom, where maybe the teaching and learning process looks different in that small room, where it does, looks different in a larger room? So I think some of those things play into it as well. So we've, we've got a lot of data, we have a lot of things to consider, but we've also, you know, we've just started to take a look at some of the work that's going ahead of us. So our master planning process right now is due to come to completion and come in front of you towards the end of May, beginning first part of June. So, that answer?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
The other thing that I'd like to mention, as I, I've spent the time between the last board meeting and this board meeting, meeting with many, many people, and trying to understand their thoughts, their concerns, their questions. And so I, I did write a statement to try to summarize all of that, because I did try to meet with people from all over the city, with all, all kinds of different types of concerns and thoughts on, on this tough decision. So if you'll bear with me, I'll, I'll read my statement, and I hope I, it's a response also to the people that I've met with, to those conversations, and to the district as a whole. But the decisions surrounding school closures are immensely challenging and carry a significant emotional and logistical weight for all involved. We know that disruptions are destabilizing, and we recognize that change is hard. It's essential to recognize our district staff's thoughtful and dedicated approach throughout this process. They have not approached these decisions lightly. They have undertaken a comprehensive review of the data, considered factors such as enrollment trends, financial sustainability, building conditions and utilization, honoring feedback, feedback from all, and aligning decisions with our strategic plan, so that we can deliver the best possible educational outcomes for students. The objective behind these difficult decisions is to ensure the long-term viability and effectiveness of our educational system, making it more sustainable and capable of meeting the academic needs of and capable of meeting the academic needs of all students. We deeply understand the pain and uncertainty of these changes, particularly for parents navigating the shift alongside their children. The thought of uprooting your child from their familiar learning environment, friends and teachers is not lost on us. We know these schools are more than just buildings. So to the families impacted, please know that your feelings of loss, frustration, and concern are valid. We recognize our profound responsibility in making these decisions, and do not take them lightly. We are here to support you, to listen to your concerns, and to answer your questions, and to help your child embrace these changes with as much care and support as possible. To the staff affected by these changes, we extend our deepest empathy and gratitude. We recognize the emotional toll that these decisions impose, not just on families, but on you as well. Many of you have dedicated years and even decades to nurturing and teaching the children, becoming integral parts of these school communities. So the decisions to close a school impacts you profoundly, affecting not only your professional lives, but also your personal connections. Please know that we are committed to supporting you through this new journey and acknowledge your invaluable contributions to the students during this challenging times. It is crucial that we as a community understand the depth of consideration and care that has gone into this process. Our district staff members, many of whom are deeply embedded in our community, have children who attend Wichita Public Schools, and many of them started their careers in classrooms. They are working diligently to mitigate the impact of these changes, and they deserve our respect and support as they navigate these complex decisions, aiming to strengthen our educational system for the future. These individuals are exceptionally thoughtful and deeply understand the impacts of these decisions on every member of our community. They have approached this difficult situation with a level of care and deliberation that speaks volumes of their commitment to the students' and educational well-being. Recognizing the complexities involved, they have strived to make choices that while difficult, are aimed at securing the most positive future for the education of the students. The district leaders are dedicated to navigating these challenges thoughtfully. We encourage open dialogue, constructive feedback, and community engagement throughout this process as we believe it is through a collaborative effort that we can best navigate these changes so that we can provide a high-quality education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. My approach to this, when it became clear that these difficult decisions were going to be before the board, was to look into the future and see what we want this school district to be in the next three to five years. And when you look into the future, you have to look into the past. And I know that to survive the severe education funding cuts that happened in the 2010s, and the pandemic that happened in the 2020, we found and utilized tools that we knew benefited our students and provided a comeback when we reached those tough times. And I'm glad that Susan put in her report with the feedback drivers priorities, because that's really, I think that's one thing I think maybe got lost in the presentation, but we really need to focus as a board on this, is what we are trying to do is stay innovative so that when the next challenge comes, because there will be another challenge before any of us get off this board again, I've learned that, about every two years there is a big challenge. But keep mental health, child studies, team support, just visited Payne Elementary recently about that, maintain a level of additional para support, maintain jobs, reasonable class sizes and caseloads, protect wages, classroom vacancies filled with certified teachers, student and family engagement. That is the goal, that is what we're looking for in the next three to five years. And that's going to take a community effort, not only from this board, but from everyone in the community, and we appreciate your feedback and we appreciate your help. And I tell you, I've also got to give out a huge thank you to this board. I've seen you working day and night, going over this, and with our new board members, we threw you in the fire, and you've worked doubled hard catching up with us, and I appreciate everyone's effort on that, and I mean that sincerely. And I'd like to make a motion that the board establish 6:00 PM, February 29th, 2024, as the public hearing at the Alvin Morris Administrative Center, Room 813, and approve the proposed notice of public hearing for publication in the Wichita Eagle on February 14th and 18th.
I'll second that.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy, discussion? There's, oh, okay, there is no discussion, everyone's comfortable going to vote? Okay. Motion carries seven zero. We will take a short, brief, let's call, since we're 15 after, we'll take a 10-minute break to give staff the opportunity to do what they need to do to get started, get this process started. And I apologize, I'm fumbling around a little bit here. Calling the February 12th Board of Education meeting back to order. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
We'll start on Knox then, if that's okay. Do you have any consent items to pull, Knox?
Yeah, I'll pull, I'll pull the 2024, 25, and the 2025, 26 district calendars.
What number is that?
That's A2.
A2.
A2? Any other items?
That's all.
Thank you. Hazel?
That was the one I would go ahead and pull, I'm good.
I have no consent items to pull, Diane?
I have no items to pull.
Melody?
No items to pull.
Julie?
No additional items to pull.
Okay. Kathy?
One additional to pull, which is going to be, I think, C7. It's a Luke question.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda except for C7 and A2? The calendar.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Melody, seconded by Julie, to accept the consent agenda, except for those two items pulled. Motion carries seven zero. Let's start with, Kathy, do you mind starting with the, the C7 one?
I do not.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The exterior restoration of North High School is currently in Phase 5. This is a very simple question, how many phases are there?
Luke, you want to share with us?
Depends on how much money we have every year.
Is that, is that right, it's, it's a financial?
Yeah, so, so we're just kind of carving it up as we have money available. Our focus has been on all the entrances. Those are the areas we want to make sure are as safe as possible first. But yeah, we have about $6 million more worth of work to do on exterior restoration, so at least probably four more phases at 1.3 million or so. But if we don't have the money to carry 1.3 million or so per year, then we might have to break it up even smaller than that, so.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know. I move that we go ahead and accept C7.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Diane. Motion carries seven zero. I think there was three or four people that were calling for the calendar, so. Minnie, Minnie, Mo, Knox, you can go ahead and start. Questions or concerns, or?
Yeah, I think for me, it's mainly if we could vote on it year by, well, just vote on 2024 and 2025, and then separately 2025 and 2026, instead of like the package deal.
Do you want to make a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to just vote for 2024, 2025, the proposed calendar.
There's discussion, please?
Oh yeah, there'll be discussion.
Second the motion?
Moved by Knox, seconded by Melody, to separate out 25, 26 district calendar for future approval, and to approve 24, 25, is that?
It was more so just to split it, to begin with.
Just, I'm just, go ahead, say again.
To split 2024 slash 2025 from the 2025, 2026. So we're just voting for? Individually.
Oh, okay, 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 I see what you're saying. Kathy?
Yes, I'd like to, I've received a lot of emails from our educators, our teachers, and I want to talk specifically about January the 3rd. There is question that the teachers are just getting back from vacation, from the Christmas break, and that they have not had an opportunity to have input to the calendar committee in regards to this. Is there something that we can do to allow our teachers to have input with this? And is this something that we can shift around so they have January the 3rd off?
Well, I will ask Mr. Hudson to come to the podium. I am not on the calendar committee myself. He chairs the calendar committee, and he can kind of speak to the process, so.
Shouldn't we first vote on the motion on the floor that we're going to split these into two separate items?
We'll go ahead and still discuss it, though, and then have that vote. Go ahead, Sean.
So, if I would, we have a couple new, new board members that don't even know what the calendar committee is, or who's part of it, or any of that. So maybe just give us a brief, kind of, who's on the calendar committee, how many people are on it? What, what led you to get to where we are, and then you can address the specific question that Kathy had, if that's okay.
So, good evening, board members, Superintendent Bealfield, my name is Sean Hudson. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. To Ms. Bond's question, and to what Kelly said, the calendar committee is a committee made up, of course, of board members and other stakeholders throughout the district. They are parents involved in the district, they are super stack students, they are both of our labor unions that are involved, and district administrators, teachers, principals from all across the district. And so when we pull them together every year, what we do is we propose a copy of the next year calendar, because this is the time of year that we start planning for the next school year. Keep in mind, this is the district overall calendar, but there are 11 other work calendars that are born out of this one. Things for nutrition services, things for our para, or our classified staff, our teachers that are on a 190 contract, and then of course, our administrators at 220, 225, which is also our clerical staff, and those that work year-round that are on a 260. So the calendar committee met, we convene every year in the fall. So the first meeting was in November. We kicked off in November by having general discussion around a draft of the calendar. Discussion is allowed on that. To Ms. Bond's point, I know you heard from teachers, there are teachers that are represented through their union. Both Katie Warren and Mike Harris are representatives that sit on that committee and provide that input, as well as Esaw Freeman, who is head of the SEIU, representing the classified employees as well. So we met in November, then we brought back some additional drafts. Again, this was the first year that we were asked for efficiency purposes to provide a two-year calendar outlook. So that's why, Mr. Vong, you see a 24, 25, and a 25, 26 calendar. This is the first time that we've done that. So I hope that addresses your question. So therefore, we met again right before Christmas. There were still some changes that they wanted to modify and see. We listened to that input and feedback. We reconvened in January after the winter break. And then, of course, by majority vote for those that were present, this was the calendar that was approved and was asked for me to bring to the Board of Education.
There's a suggestion to move the in-service from the 3rd to the 6th, would that be possible?
It is possible, but what you're doing then is, that only impacts, you know, teachers don't really, that doesn't impact them. You're, you're really prolonging the number of days unpaid for your classified staff. So that can be done, but they will go one more extra day without pay over the holiday break.
And do they understand that, those that are concerned about this January 3rd? Do they understand that?
Yes, that was part of the discussion throughout the meetings at the calendar committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Kathy. Hazel?
So Sean, can you explain why it was, you said that it was on the advice of, of somebody to do two, a two-year calendar, was, is there a purpose to it, is it?
I looked at my boss for that answer.
Sure, I can, I can answer that. So the, the second year of the calendar provides us the ability to plan further out as a district. So in about September of 2024, our IST department, our tech department, will start building master schedules for 25, 26. So we are that far ahead as we try to plan. If they know the grading period ranges, so start first day of school, last day of the first quarter, et cetera, last day of school, that helps them to set up the infrastructure and the, in the system so that it allows us to be a lot more efficient with a number of processes down the road. As Sean said, 11 calendars spawn out of this one. So the earlier we can get it done, we feel like the more efficient we can be. A lot of big districts do two-year calendars, so it's something I brought to the team. If you all don't want to vote on the 25, 26 calendar tonight, that doesn't, that isn't, you know, it's not going to change a lot as far as processes go.
It was an efficiency that has been recommended by the Council of Great City Schools.
Yeah.
So we just took that idea and wanted to bring it to you, but again, it's ultimately your decision.
So if we did vote on two years, would the second year be set in stone? Or would it be flexible, or, because I mean, things happen?
Yes, so partially, it, it wouldn't be set in stone until the negotiations process happens, because the number of days the teachers work and all of that is negotiated. So if that were to change throughout negotiations, we'd come back to the calendar and revise it, so.
So what wouldn't change is the start and end date in semester breaks?
That would be the big deal, I mean, that, that's probably the biggest part of it that we would want to keep solid, is for IST and set up for synergy. But, yeah, I mean, if, if something happened and we said, well, we need to do this, or we need to do that and make an adjustment, we'd bring it back to the board, you'd, you know, vote on a revised calendar, and we would move that forward. But I think, you know, these aren't necessarily copy and paste, because the year, the days are always, Christmas falls on a different day and all that kind of stuff. But there is a way, you know, these calendars look fairly similar from, from year to year. So I think it's, it's not, you know, crazy to think we could look two years out and be pretty accurate with what we think's going to happen.
Other considerations are, like, this year is a leap year. So we have that that goes into it, but not just the start date and the end date, but we also look to, what is our contractual agreements with them? We also have the number of holidays that are built into it. Keep in mind, Kansas Department of Education says, because when we look at these calendars, we have to physically count the number of student contact days. The 2024, or, yeah, 24, 25 has 170 student contact days, we're one less in 25, 26, at 169. So we try to look at that impact, because that means that that's one more day that nutrition services folks don't work, and that means it's one more day that students are impacted by not having meals at school. So we want to make sure we have enough student seat time hours, which is 1,116, yes. As far as that goes. So we have to physically count all the hours, plus the professional development that is allowed. We have built in when they have those in-services, when they have their non-teaching duty days, and so on forth, and then of course, the consistency with which we have put together the parent-teacher conferences.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Melody?
Thank you. There was also some questions about the length of time, the length of the day for, that's included on the calendar, that, how it relates to conferences, where you have a 7:00 AM start, sometimes individuals would not be getting home until after 7:00 PM, or the 8:00 AM start, buildings, once again, after 8:00 AM, after 8:00 PM, and potentially for latchkey, I believe it's 8:30. So there were some concerns that were raised by teachers. that were raised by teachers in regards to the length of the day of a, um, of an actual conference day. And so, the, the question that they asked was for teacher input. Um, I understand that we heard from, that, or that you, who sits on that, uh, committee is UTW and also, um, SEICU.
SEIU.
SEIU. Um, however, evidently, there are teachers that are still questioning, uh, the input. And, um, so, I would like to suggest that we hold off on, on voting on this, this evening. That would be my, uh.
On both calendars?
No, I'm.
Your watch wants to talk to me.
She always wants to talk. But, um, so, okay, let me think about how, no, separating, we can vote on the separation of the two. We haven't actually voted on that. We still have conversation going on, on, on that. So, what I'm asked, I think we need to go ahead and close that out, and then I will make another, um, I'll put forward another, um, recommendation for the board to consider. Because I don't think, this isn't a, that isn't a part of this conversation. Didn't we split this up?
Not yet.
Or did we choose?
We have not taken.
We haven't really even split it up. Okay, so, um, how do you want to proceed? Yes, but, and we, the, how do you want to proceed, Mr. President?
Well, I was, I was waiting, yeah. Uh, basically, um, I like the planning aspect of the two-year calendar, and one thing I've learned through my experience of the seven years on this board is do not get bogged down into calendar questions, because the calendar is like a bubble. Uh, if you try to, uh, especially after a committee agrees to it, we have a committee where, uh, that's represented all stakeholders, and if they can agree on a two-year contract, then we probably are in good shape on that contract, on that, uh, that calendar. So, uh, I'll be voting against that motion. And then, if it fails or passes, uh, then we would, could entertain a new motion.
I think you're correct. I appreciate. Yep.
Any other discussion about the original motion? Sure. The motion is to split the calendar into two years.
Yes, split the calendar votes, so we just be voting on each calendar year individually?
Right. Which I then think, uh, and I'm, and I'm saying I would like to keep it as a two-year planning calendar.
Okay.
And that we have a committee that's already accepted it.
Okay.
Kathy, go ahead.
I have a question, yes. Um, so, if we're gonna vote to separate these two calendar years, are we gonna then vote to accept each year separately?
It could, depending on the motion.
So, what's the difference? If we're gonna vote yes, yes, why don't we just vote yes?
Yeah, I, I, that's.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have a motion, and NOC, go ahead and state your motion one more time so that it can be clear of what everyone's voting on?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to split the combined two-year, 2024, 2025, to 2025, 2026, and splitting that, so we're voting on each year individually.
Thank you, NOC. And it was seconded by Melody. Okay. Motion fails four to three. Is there a second motion on this consent item?
Yes. So, now, my, my motion would be. It would actually be for it to go back now to the committee to discuss the, um, and I guess maybe I should be asking you this question, Mr. Hudson, and that is, um, was there conversation about the length of time? Did they, was there discussion about the, um, on the calendar in regards to conference days and the length of time that teachers are expected to stay?
They would negotiate just the days or how it is structured. The actual hours and the contractual day would be something that would be done at union negotiations.
So, that is, that's what I?
This calendar, this committee would not have any authority over that.
Okay, so that is what I was thinking. Okay, then, that's, is that how I would respond to the individuals? Because I'm sure not just I got the, the correspondence from teachers.
Correct. And since this board struck a two-year agreement with its unions, that would not come up for negotiations until next year.
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you, Melody. NOC?
So, how many people are on the calendar committee, again?
Roughly about 25 to 30.
25 to 30. And so, um, in terms of the recommendations, is that brought directly to the school board, or is it also brought to other staff, you know, teachers, classified staff, and parents as well for, for, for a vote?
All the rev, all the, uh, folks are there, and then we just basically do it by a consensus vote. Then it's brought to the board.
No, I, I think, I'm sorry. I think what NOC's asking is a, a broader group.
No.
Is that what you, is that right? Okay.
Hazel?
So, I just wanna, I'm just wanna get this straight. So, my, uh, my, I opposed a two-year calendar because I, I wanted to understand why it was beneficial, and with the understanding that the second year was not set in stone, that except for the purpose of using it for, what?
Yeah.
Right. So.
And planning.
And sorry, I'm sorry.
And planning.
And planning. So, if we, um, go ahead and pass the two-year, there is, I under, is my understanding right that we, if, in the event that we want to make adjustments, they can be made, and we can do an addendum to that second year, or, or revisit the, the dates? I mean, we're, I just, just because things happen, and so.
There's a caveat at the bottom of the calendar, and I'll just read it. It says, "The calendar may be changed at the discretion of the Board of Education and/or the administration."
Okay.
So, and that's even the current, that's even next year's calendar, right? Because some, something could come up.
Okay.
Next year.
So, for example, if we exceeded our snow days and you had to make an unforeseen decision to extend school into June because we went way past it, we could make that change, but we would have to bring that to you for recommendation. So, anytime there's a change, it has to be brought to the board.
Okay, so we vote with them, with them together as a two-year plan, and then with the understanding that we can make change?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Kathy?
I trust the committee has thoroughly looked over everything, and I trust the recommendation is not to hurt people, but to create efficiency to the calendar years for our school years. So, I will be voting in favor of passing a two-year calendar.
There's not a motion yet.
I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion that we will accept a two-year calendar as it is planned today.
Basically, you're wanting to vote on?
I'm sorry. Okay, on A2.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Diane to approve, uh, the calendar on the consent agenda. Motion carries five, two.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Patrick, next item, please?
Next item, under policy, second review, proposed updates to drone policy.
This is a second review, and we will do, uh, a final approval of this policy tonight, unless there is changes the board would like. Seeing none, I would like, I would entertain a motion to adopt this policy.
I'll second it.
That's actually, that, I'll take that as a motion, and, did you want to second, Kathy? Okay. No, I said I entertain a motion. Sorry, that's okay. Uh, moved by Kathy, seconded by Hazel. All those in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. Patrick, next item, please?
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilfeld, and BOE members. Um, I know tonight you had some really tough decisions to make with the $42 million budget shortfall, um, and that there's staffing shortages and building maintenance costs. Um, I also understand that SPED has not been fully funded, and that could have helped pay for Phase Two and all kinds of things over the last several years. And I hope that the parents and teachers in these affected buildings reach out to their legislators, because, um, this, you know, this is unacceptable. Um, I know that, that these, um, these, uh, challenging times, it's extremely hard on staff. Um, they love their schools, they love their students, and I've been getting messages all night from them, and they're extremely devastated. Um, I just want to say, um, real quick, thank you to Superintendent Beilfeld for the team's meeting. Um, we appreciated that he took the time to answer questions that Thursday night from staff. Um, uh, we talked with HR. While we didn't know the buildings, we, we did know that there was a clear process. Um, Sean and Jenna even looked up, like, um, restaurants and dry cleaning, and all those, those places around the buildings. So, we appreciate you looking into that for the staff, and, um, that you've talked about retention bonuses for the certified staff impacted, because you, we talked to you about what a challenge this is going to be for our staff. But I think probably what makes me the most sick about this whole thing is, um, I don't know, it was a couple Fridays ago, I was driving Dane to school, and it was, um, negative 10 degrees out, and there were kids walking without coats on. And, um, they were walking to school, and it was heartbreaking. Um, while I was sitting there, um, first of all, the internet in here is awful, but I was able to pull up some data, and, um, um, it looks like the district, um, low socioeconomic free and reduced lunch rate is around 80%. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess. And, uh, five of the six schools that you've chosen to, um, shutter, um, have over 90% free and reduced lunch rates. Um, these, these families, um, they may not have access to vehicles. Um, and, um, you know, I, I was, as, again, the internet in here is awful. I can't, somebody's gonna have to help me with that later, but, um, just putting in my MapQuest, how long does it take to walk from, um, Clark Elementary to Caldwell? Takes over 30 minutes. And we're sending kids to school negative 10 degrees. Like, it makes me sick, and I know our teachers are gonna be really, really, really dis, just worried about their students. These are elementary kids that walk to school. Um, I also pulled up some of the attendance rates, and maybe somebody can look at Payne's attendance rate. Um, I know two of the schools on the list, last year we paid money to help get the attendants up. These kids live in those neighborhoods, and now they're going to have to walk 30 minutes? It's just not gonna happen. Um, so, I understand that these are really, really hard decisions. Um, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm so sorry that these have to be made, but I hope that, um, all those factors were taken into account, because five of the six schools have over 90% free and reduced lunch. I mean, it's just, it's really awful. Um, there was a comment earlier, um, and I don't remember exactly what it was. It was on one of the slide shows, um, PowerPoints, and it talked about, um, you know, we're not gonna trade out schools, and we would never ask you to do that. We have, we represent the teachers, and, um, but I just want to remind you that you were elected, and you guys can ask for anything you'd like. You don't have to deal in absolutes. You can ask for different, different plans, different scenarios. Um, so, don't forget that. Don't, don't give away your power. Um, that being said, I, I think the district, um, you know, I can tell that they're very, they, this is not something they want to do, um, and that they are, you know, really being thoughtful about the process. Um, but those were just some things that our teachers had on their minds. Um, and Mike was gonna share about our calendar committee and that process, so I'll let him speak. Thank you.
Mike, I'll allow it this one time, but I, one thing that we need to consider is, uh, during this UTW time.
We, we don't get access, open access to have multiple people.
We'll just need to make sure that there's only one speaker per.
Is that a policy of the board somewhere that we have in writing that we would?
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna debate.
That you'd like to start tonight?
I'm not gonna debate this with you tonight.
I'm just asking.
It's just common courtesy.
Common courtesy for who?
That we've given you a slot, and.
And did you give indication that there are restraints on the slot or how it was to be used?
Mike, I'll give you the last word. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, respected members of the Board of Education, esteemed colleagues, and valued members of the community. I speak to you tonight because I was asked by our teachers and by President Katie Warren on behalf of our teachers to, I apologize if this caused any issues for board members.
It's, it really wasn't a big issue.
I'm sorry.
Are we just trying to set a precedent for the future?
Okay, I, I believe that'd be an awesome conversation that we could have at a, at a more appropriate time in the future, President Reeser. Can I continue?
You may.
Okay, thank you very much. Will you interrupt me again, or am I gonna allow, be allowed to complete it?
Wow.
I just wanted to make sure. Today, we find ourselves at a crossroads, faced with decisions that will shape the future of education in our district. The recommendation for closure of six schools is presented by the district leadership brings us together under circumstances that are far from ideal. It is with a heavy heart that I address the disheartening aspects of tonight's presentation. As advocates for education and as stewards of our community, tru, communities trust, we are compelled to question the process that has led to these recommendations. The absence of specific data underpinning these decisions has not gone unnoticed tonight. Trust us is a refrain that while rooted in goodwill cannot substitute for the transparency and accountability expected by our educators, students, and their families. Our concerns are magnified by the observation that the schools targeted for school closures disproportionately have served communities already facing significant socioeconomic challenges. The data on free and reduced lunches and chronic absenteeism speak to deeper systemic issues that should inform, not be sidelined by our decision-making process. Without full transparency, there's a palpable fear that these decisions may inadvertently target the very families least equipped to voice their opposition, those working tirelessly across multiple jobs to support their loved ones. While we recognize the diligence of district leadership, in grappling with the complex issues, the pattern emergence from the targeted schools suggested troubling overlap with socio-economically disadvantaged neighborhoods. These communities have historically been negatively affected by decisions made by this board, going back to the forced desegregation of Wichita schools. The observation, this observation warrants a pause and more nuanced consideration. Are we inadvertently compounding the challenges faced by our most vulnerable communities in our decision-making? As representatives and advocates for the educational welfare of our city, we assume the role of ambassadors, not just for our profession, but for every child and family who relies on us to safeguard their right to equitable education. In the spirit, I urge collaborative reevaluation of the path forward. Our community is united in our call for the data and rationale that have guided these recommendations. Only through a shared understanding can we ensure our actions generally serve the best interests of all stakeholders. In moving forward, I hope this board will commit to an inclusive process that values the voices of those who stand to lose the most. Our decisions must be guided not by the expediency, but by a principled commitment to equity and justice. We owe it to our community to explore every alternative, to exhaust every avenue that might lead us to a solution, and to uphold the dignity and potential of every one of our students. The calendars discussion exemplifies some of the problems in tonight's meeting. The fact of the matter is, the calendar committee is made up in a way that teachers' voices aren't considered. The decision is already a foregone conclusion. In fact, this year during the calendar committee, we had to ask there to be a vote, because we were told that the decision didn't matter. It was purely advisory, and it would be a recommendation made on our behalf to district leadership, not to the Board of Education. We had to ask them to pretend to have a vote. Do not be fooled by what's going on here. Thank you.
Patrick, next item, please?
Next item, under reports, service employees international.
Any representative of the service? Seeing none. Patrick, next item, please?
Next item, superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you. Um, I want to share a little bit of good news here, um, before I get started, or. Before I get started, or before I get summarized, we had some good seniors in here tonight. That was fun to see, with the CTE kids and the, and the fine arts kids. Even though it's not directly a student outcomes presentation, the credentials, the college credit, all the stuff that the CTE kids get and their future careers was super exciting to hear about. I also wanted to, Gil sent me this over the weekend, wanted to make sure we celebrated 6A state champion, East High, for Scholars Bowl. There is a narrative that our kids can't read and can't do, not academically proficient, on and on and on. We won 6A, and we were, Northwest was runner-up in 6A for Scholars Bowl. So we've got some pretty great kids. And in summary, I didn't have much else for tonight. I, I do want to say, this is really hard. You know, this is really hard, and I think, you know, we'll see, we'll continue to see emotion, and people advocating, and, you know, really wanting to know what's next, what does this mean? If you all need anything from us as far as information, some of this Susan and I have already talked about, some of the poverty data you just heard isn't, might lead you to a conclusion that I, I would disagree is accurate, so I'd be happy to, I'll send it to you tomorrow, kind of where, where these schools fall as far as the rank order in poverty. But it's super, super hard. I mean, I, what Katie said is not, not exaggerated, that kids will be walking further to school, and that's, that's extremely, extremely difficult for us as a, as a system. Regardless of which buildings we close, kids would walk further to school, right? That's just the reality of what it is. So, but she's not wrong. This, this is challenging, and we, we want to try to work with parents as best we can in whatever, whatever we end up doing. And ultimately, it's in you guys' hands, right? We're, we're making a recommendation. I believe in the recommendation 100% personally, but if, if you all don't, you know, that's what, what you get to decide on March 4th. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, Board of Education.
Kathy?
I have nothing.
Julie?
No report tonight.
Melody?
No report.
Diane?
No report.
I have no report. Hazel?
No report.
Noc?
No report.
Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, new business.
Seeing none. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, Board of Education requests.
And I'm just kind of rotating, so we'll start back over on this end this time. Noc?
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out the best way to frame this for clarity, I think, for me, and then also the general public. Any supporting data, context we could share, as to the decision criteria for the school closures, I think for the sake of transparency. And also, you know, opening ourselves up to public scrutiny, and us being able to defend our decisions. That's my request. So, not sure if I phrased that right. Again, like, new guy here, so.
Sure. So, I'll try to summarize. So you would like us to provide supporting data that was, as far as the criteria goes, beyond what was in the presentation tonight?
Or just anything like to clarify or, you know, add further context to, just to, again, like, address any misconceptions.
Okay, okay. If there's particular misconceptions that you think are out there, just let me know that we can tailor that, too. Thank you.
I think we can do that as an ongoing discussion between the superintendent and clarification that all of us will have in the next 30 days. Is that okay? Noc?
Yep.
Okay. Hazel?
No, no requests.
I have no requests. Diane?
No requests.
Melody?
The only request that I would have is for us to be updated on any conversations that we have with our legislature in terms of funding for USD 259, special education specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Julie?
No requests.
Kathy?
No requests.
Okay. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Second.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Melody for adjournment. Motion carries seven-zero. See everyone on February 29th at AMAC, room 813. If not before.